Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order the Village of Westmont planning and zoning mission for our regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, July 11th, at seven o'clock. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
And Chairman Pill.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Having a quorum, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you're seated, anyone who is going to offer testimony tonight, speak at the microphone either for or against, I need to swear you in. Please acknowledge this simple statement with an "I do," raise your right hand. Do you swear that your testimony tonight will be truthful, so help your God?
I do.
Thank you all, please be seated, and I'd ask, as you're sitting down, to please silence your cell phones, any pagers, anything that could interrupt the meeting. I'd also, anyone who is going to speak tonight, there is a sign-in sheet up here on the podium. There's also a sign-in sheet outside the door, so in case anybody was out there earlier and signed in, just one or the other, that's fine, but everybody does need to sign in. Our first order of business, Senator, is the approval of the minutes of June 13th, 2018 regular meeting. May I have a motion, please?
It's a move.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Thomas. Comments, questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
Yes. Minutes carry. All right, our next item is our open forum. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll continue to a review of the public hearing procedures. Tonight, I will introduce each item on the agenda in the order they're listed. Please approach the speaking area and sign in on the sign-in sheet, if you haven't already done so, on the one in the back. I invite the presenting team to present the agenda item, explaining their item and addressing the findings of fact and any hardships as relevant. There's an overhead projector for all diagrams, as we do have a TV audience at home, and I ask everyone to stay in the podium area so that the microphone carries and the cameras can be recording this for the TV viewing audience. It's in the millions. After then, we've had the presentation, we'll go to staff for comments. After that, I will open the public hearing and everyone will have a chance to speak on this, and the applicant may have a chance to address any concerns brought up by the public. After that, each commissioner will then offer their comments, questioning the applicant and/or staff. After that, there'll be a discussion among the commissioners, and at that point, I will then close the public hearing. At the conclusion of the discussion, I'll call for a motion in a second on that, on each agenda item, and at that point, we'll have a final commissioner discussion and any comments before we go ahead and proceed to a vote. All votes will include a finding of fact, if it's relevant. At that point, once the vote is completed, I'll instruct the applicant on what the next steps will be. All right. We'll now proceed to our open hearing, and we'll begin our new business with planning and zoning item 18-010, the Westmont Park District regarding the property located at 660 Blackhawk Drive, Westmont, Illinois, for the following. A, a site and landscaping plan approvals will allow for the new construction of an auditorium in the M Manufacturing District. Now, I will be recusing myself from this because of a conflict of interest, as I am a Park District employee, and at this point, I will be turning over the chairmanship of the meeting for this item to Commissioner Van Buren. Commissioner Van Buren, do you have enough experience in this?
I think so.
Okay. Forty-four years here with us, so, there we go. All righty, Commissioner Van Buren, it is yours.
Okay, we'll ask first that the petitioner would like to make a presentation.
Do you have to sign in? Do you? I'll start while you're signing in.
Sure.
So, here we go, right? I'm having an overwhelming sense of deja vu, which I'm assured you are too. As many of you know, this has been a long journey, and this is not the first time this project has come before the Planning and Zoning Board. Some of you may have heard our prior presentations, and thank you for sticking with us as we attempt to bring FMC Naderatorium to Westmont. I believed in our former models, but feel this current version is superior to anything we have considered in the past. The location, not being around some families and homes, traffic flow, and the ability to partner with the Westmont Park District are all ideal for this project. Positioning the Naderatorium in such a close proximity to Ty Warner Park is genius. It will enhance this existing jewel of Westmont and allow families another place to congregate for recreation and time together. I'm very excited and grateful to bring this project to Westmont. Our members of our team are available for any questions you may have throughout this presentation. Thanks.
I'm going to make a very brief comment. Bob Fleck, Executive Director, Westmont Park District, and I think, as most people know by now, we have partnered up with FMC Naderatorium and Mary Ann Kaufman, and the Park District, obviously, is in full support of this. We have a ground lease that has been signed as of July 5th, and green light, full steam ahead. So with that, I'm going to step aside, and I'm going to let Mary Ann and her team make the presentation.
So, yeah, we're just going to show you some slides. I think you all know this project pretty well, but this is how it will look on Ty Warner Park South. It'll be across the street from the main park, and I think it looks great. This is the interior, again, the large pool for competition, as well as the practice pool behind it. What else do we have? And that's it? I think that's it.
Do you have a depiction of how the building, the site plan itself and landscaping plan that shows how it sits on the lot and where detention is on the lot?
Yeah, so the road angles a little bit there, which actually, we placed the building on, following that angle of the road. There's a lot of windows on our west side of our building, so it'll have a nice view of the park on that side as well. We kind of put it where the Ever Pure Building was already existing, too. The parking lot on the east side stays, and I even think all of our drives coming in on two sides are the existing drives that are already there.
Hey, if I could take, I'll take you through some of the key elements. First one is, thank staff. We've been through this for three times now, and staff has been great. The fellows sitting here at the podium, and all the staff behind the scenes, has really been great in helping Mary Ann and our group. I just told Mary Ann I feel bad, she's a poor woman, has done this three times now, and had to relocate three different times. I do have, let me queue this up, I do have some additional, just to give context of what the location is, what it was, and what we are envisioning it to be. How do I switch over to this?
Dennis, could you switch it over to the laptop? There you go.
Let me skip ahead to some... Currently, this is the site in front of you. I'll try to zoom in on this. This is the previous site. This is about circa 2002. This is prior to Bob and the Park District obtaining this site. And this was the Ever Pure Manufacturing Building. It housed a large building that covered most of the site with parking in the front and the rear of the buildings. What you see here is kind of the entire building, and then the parking in front, two access drives off of Blackhawk, and then one off Plaza. If you look at today... Oh, man. Apologize, this is a little... This is what remains of the site. On the west part of the site, you have a large intention area that serves detention for the Park District site, as well as the adjacent developments upstream into the south, the Audi dealership, the Mercedes dealership, and the Northwell for the village. That kind of gets conveyed through that west portion and then towards north into existing Village storm sewer. Bob has placed a large soccer field on the site now. At one point, it was previously planned for an aquatic center, which kind of maintains with the same theme moving forward. You see the remnant parking lot on the east part of the site with the existing access points both to the north and to the east, which are very much being maintained as part of this site plan. Coming back to the site plan, I'll give you some of the key... Really, when looking at this site, when starting off, it was a five-acre site. Previously, this was cited on Oak Brook Hills, which had a much larger footprint. Parking was always a concern here. Per zoning, parking is 280 stalls that are required. This site plan provides 295 stalls, so we exceed zoning. One of the challenges with this site was an iterative process to kind of develop a site plan that kind of was a pedestrian-friendly, pushed the building closer to the roadway to kind of create a more central building along the face of Ty Warner Park, with a parking lot in the back and to the sides, adjacent to the auto dealerships. To the south are the large parking decks for the Mercedes dealership. So we wanted this building to be front and forward and try to mask that rear elevation of the auto dealership. The large complex parking on the west side of the site is somewhat intentional. One of the things with this site is we have to maintain the stormwater detention that was provided and is currently existing. That detention gets replaced in an underground concrete vault on the west side of the site. You vaguely see it in that red kind of dash line underneath that parking lot, and there's a second facility on the east side of the park, which is also a concrete underground vault. That kind of maintains the drainage requirements for the areas to the south, and also for this new site and the new DuPage County ordinance requirements that have since been updated. Site circulation was kind of developed hand-in-hand with the Village Planning Department. There's a one-way drive on the north side of the building, generally intended for bus drop-off, one-way traffic flow, drop-offs, and circle out. The access drive to the east was lined up with parking lot to the north, considering there'd be some mutual benefit between the two parking lots. The darker green areas are intended to be oversized landscape islands with the bio-swear, bio infiltration, natural detention areas. Then generally, from a sanitary and water pickup, the Ever Pure Building had previous connections, which we are just utilizing moving forward. With that, I call consultants here, the traffic engineer, the landscape architect, to be happy to answer any further questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
Okay. That will open the floor. Ask for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. So I'll just kind of summarize this. So this is a M District property, so it's a manufacturing district. So I'll try not to refer back to the previous approvals, but it's hard not to, and say what some of the differences are. So first off, is this an allowable use? It's an allowable use by right, specifically because it's a recreational facility, and they are pairing up with the Park District and the Park District property. So it is a use that's permitted in this district by right. Next, does it need any variances or special uses? And the applicant worked very specifically to make sure that all requirements were met so that there were no variance or special uses. So actually, in your staff report, I did highlight all the minimum standards for the M District, so your setbacks of 30 feet, your height requirements of, if they're 35 feet. It, I'm sorry, 45 feet. It does meet all the requirements. So in terms of what are you considering tonight, it is just strictly a site and landscaping approval. So in terms of the 12 or 14 different approvals that were happening at the last site, because it was a much larger project, that is not the same tonight. It is a site and landscaping approval. Where I think this project does get a little complicated is in the preliminary engineering. So they had to lock in a site plan so that it wasn't changing by the time they moved to construction. To do that, they provide us with preliminary engineering. As the applicant has stated, that it's a little more complicated because it was serving multiple sites, and it is being all undergrounded. As of, in front of you tonight, so in your initial staff reports, our engineering staff at Engineering Consultant had said there were laundry list of items that needed to be fixed. What you do have before you tonight are some revisions, and we have Noriel Noriega here, if there's additional questions. Both those sets of revisions, both from our consultant and from internal staff, have revised those to the point that they say that there are still some nuances that can be remedied at permit, but actually locking in the site plan and has everything been remedied so that it's a realistic parking plan, it's a realistic site plan, they do feel comfortable. And we've got Noriel here tonight, if there are any additional questions. Parking, just like we had discussed before, 280 is what is required. They've provided 290, you said 295, but I want to say 297 is what our official count is. There will be a relationship with the Park District, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, for large events in the adjacent lots. I know there have been some initial talks with the school district, there's the junior high to the north. They have provided a traffic study, as we requested. There still will be large events. The anticipated impact would be very similar to some of the large events that already occur at Ty Warner Park. So your red, white, and barbecue, some of your other events, that's without the road and lane closures that you typically get with some of those larger events. As always, I'm available for any questions.
Okay.
And if I could just chime in, maybe the applicant can address the overflow parking specifically, in case that maybe head off any public comments, because in the last iteration, that was a concern of surrounding property owners, and there's only one point of ingress egress to the former site, and there was shared parking. A lot of that's different now with multiple points of access and your own parking, and maybe you can explain the overflow parking a little more detail.
So yes, that's something that we discussed with the Park District as well. So currently, right across the street from where the proposed site for the Naderatorium is, there is some parking that exists there, as well as some parking around the park. And we don't believe that we'll need much of that when we have a regular meet. Peak event is completely different, but those meets, just like in the past, you know, we'll be meeting with the Village, you know, by 45 days in advance, and going through like exactly how many people will be attending the swim meet, how many cars we think are coming in, and we would most likely, and we've already discussed it with the junior high and the high school, create overflow parking into that area, and then have a shuttle that will bring the parents to the Naderatorium. Those events are the ones that we would be bidding on two, three years out. You know, we're hoping that we get some of those big events, but we'll know in plenty of time, we'll be able to create a plan, just like you do for the Fourth of July or for anything else, and it's not quite as big as all that either. It's not quite as big. Just the parking, and really just the morning parking is where we really need to have a plan. Everything else is an ebb and flow throughout the day, but when they come to warm up at 7:00 AM, that's usually when there's the most cars, at 6:30 in the morning.
If I could just follow up. Last time, we had a plan development agreement with the underlying property owner, and you were part of that, and we had some conditions about you coming to the Village Board. Here, you're just having site and landscaping plan approval without an accompanying agreement that's required by Village ordinances. But if we put similar procedures into the site plan, landscaping plan ordinance, at least requiring you to come before the Village Board, explain the parking plan, making sure the board reasonably signs off on that, would you be acceptable to that condition? Because we can't require it.
Of course. I mean, and I think we have to do that. We want to make the experience as great as possible whenever we hold an event, and I think, you know, the way the traffic flows around and drop-off and everything is really what's going to make the experience great. But yes, yeah, I have no problem with having that written and we follow it.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this request? And I would remind you that this is the same building that we approved twice, it's just in a little different orientation, and one much more conducive to their use. And so, is there anyone, has any question or any comments? If not, we'll close. First, Commissioner will ask to speak on this, but Commissioner Sharp.
All right. As has been addressed already, we're really just focusing on the site plan and the landscape plan for approval. It makes it really easy for us that there aren't variances and more complex factors to consider, so thank you. I agree that this is, this just intuitively makes much more sense on this site, and I'm, as a resident of Westmont, I look forward to this being here, adjacent to Ty Warner. I think it's a great spot. I only have a couple questions, and the first one is that, oh, the first one I'll direct to staff. The landscape plan is, fully meets our ordinances right now, as it is?
Yes. The last round of comments from our landscape architect, they had met all the requirements with their latest revisions.
Okay. Because what stood out to me was that the majority, probably three-fourths of the building, has no foundation planting, which seems strange. It's just what looks like a large concrete swath around the building. So I'm wondering what we can do to just implement like a three-foot foundation planting, at least on the front facade, to soften its presence? That's something I'll throw out there for you guys to respond to later. And the other thing I noticed in the renderings, which were great, they're great renderings, was the RTUs that are facing the park. So this is a manufacturing district, so there's a lot of exposed mechanical equipment on roofs, I understand that, but what I, from scaling the drawings, it looked like the mechanical equipment was around 15 feet taller than the building, than the elevations. So I'm just going to throw out there, I don't want to amend this in any way, I just want to provide an opinion that you might want to screen those from the park, just for a better presence on the building. But besides those two things, I would like to have the foundation planting, I guess, addressed, though.
If I may come out. So what they have provided, the way the code reads in terms of foundation plantings, it's not ideal in terms of our request for design. It basically says that anywhere where there is not a sidewalk abutting it, we require foundation planting. So if you look at that landscape plan, there are foundation plantings wherever the sidewalk is not directly abutting it. Now, it doesn't specifically state that you can't put a certain percentage or a certain amount of sidewalk all the way around the building. So technically, someone could put sidewalk around the entire building, and it's not in violation of code.
Yeah.
So they have worked with us, and I'm not saying that it's not a wonderful idea. I think every building could use more landscape, especially to soften the building, but that is why we can say it does meet code the way it sits right now.
Okay. I assume that was the case, so I'll just say that I think it would improve the facade and the experience for people waiting out there for their next meet, or people waiting to pick up their kids, whatever, have someplace, some natural landscape within touch. That's all my comments. Again, I look forward to it. Thank you guys so much for your third round.
Mr. Thomas. Okay, we'll go back to Commissioner Bartel.
I, first of all, thank you for sticking with us. I think it's a wonderful project. We thought so the first two times, so we're delighted. And just one question, really, is the timeline. Assuming planning approval, are we going full steam ahead? We hope?
I signed in. Wes Raywalt, and I'm with FMC. Yes, our plan is that as soon as we can get full approval, we will get permit. We would like to break ground as early as possible in August, and we are shooting for opening the facility for full use probably around September, October of next year.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yes.
The fact that it's a project with the Village, the petitioner, the Park District, everybody cooperating, I think that's really wonderful, and makes it even a better, better project. And also, the fact that it's contiguous to the park, it's right there, it's all one big parcel, I think it fits beautifully there, so obviously, I'm supportive.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Good evening. I echo the sticking around, because it's a really great project, and I don't have too many comments, but I do have a few questions as well. Can I assume that the, down on the site plan, on the landscape plan, where it says Albany Hardware, somewhere in your landscaping there are the dumpsters, is that a dumpster location, or is that a generator? What is that exactly?
In the center rear of the building, there is a trash enclosure that will sit in an enclosure. Adjacent to that, just east of that, will be, you can kind of see it on the cursor right here. I lost the screen here. There we go. Let me zoom in on it. This will be a trash enclosure. It was strategically placed kind of in the center rear of the building, where the visibility from the adjacent right-of-ways was minimal. In front, just to the east of it, there is a large landscape island that does house an existing transformer to the facility to the south. We're respecting that transformer and maintaining that service. There's an additional transformer that's just north of that, that will be relocated, and that served the previous manufacturing building.
So what door are you coming out of the building to get the trash from the building to the dumpster?
So this would generally be the location where you'd come out of the building.
A lot of gray transition there?
No. The site overall is generally a fairly flat site. Once you get to the west, where the detention basin is, there is some contours and some embankments with the detention basin, but overall, the site is gently sloping, generally along the center line of the site to the east, and then to the west. There is some gray transition along the northeast corner of the site, where it kind of comes down towards Blackhawk and Plaza Drive. However, the rear of the building is generally, generally flat.
Okay. I have a question about detention.
Okay.
And this might be directed to staff, too, and Noriel would know the answer to this question. Since it's a project that is something that involves the Park District as far as the property, is there any way that there could be some consolidation of stormwater within the Park District system already to minimize the cost impact to the developer? We have ponds right across the street.
And Bob will help me answer this out. One of the first things that we did when this site came in is we went to Bob's office and unearthed some very ancient stormwater management reports, and I don't know, about an eight inches thick of stormwater management reports. We did review detention on Ty Warner. We did review additional opportunities to try to get over to Ty Warner from our site. One of the things that we have to do on our site is maintain the detention for the adjacent properties. There is a 2006 agreement with the Park District and the adjacent tributary areas to the south that requires stormwater management for those parcels to be placed within that west property. Right here, this dash line that is just east of that detention system is actually an existing stormwater management easement. So one of the requirements of this job was to provide detention for those parcels within that easement. We did look at additional storage. There is some additional storage on Ty Warner Park. It's generally inaccessible from our site because we can't show that we can get it there in a 100-year event. The piping required, there is a large box culvert that runs along Plaza Drive- there is a large box culvert that runs along Plaza Drive into, in front of our site, that just, there's a lot of utilities along Plaza Drive, the sanitary sewer water main, underground private utilities, as well as this very large storm sewer culvert.
Okay. There's no way we'd get the water there?
Bob, to add context.
I really can't. I can't say it any better. It was investigated, but it's complicated, it's not as feasible, and it would have caused a lot of disturbance on the park as well. So this really is best suited for all the reasons that were just stated.
Okay. Okay, can I jump to the corner, please, if you don't mind?
Corner.
The intersection.
Okay.
That, the intersection is heavily landscaped now, with a nice Ty Warner sign that's in there. Is that being maintained? It looks like it's, it's going to go.
No, it's just not represented. It needs to be maintained. It's in our agreement that it must be maintained, so that will not be touched.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll stay right out there on Black Hawk. The entrance, you moved this, the entrance to the site, you moved as far away south from the intersection, probably for, you know, good technical reasons. And that turn lane, that northbound turn lane that's on Black Hawk now is probably excessive as far as the stacking component of that turn lane. Would you agree?
I, the traffic engineer is here. We have consulted with the traffic engineer. What affects, what happens when we move that south? And that was moved south strategically to kind of enhance traffic flows and circulation on the site. What you'll see is the entrance to the northwest of the, the site, kind of comes down at a straight angle, and then east to a straight angle. So it gives two logical exit points, entry points to this site. From a distribution and, and drop off of truck vehicles, trash pickup, we felt that that access point, where they didn't have to negotiate through a parking lot to get back to the trash enclosure, the rear of the building, was most strategic. What happens when you shift that down is you actually increase the stacking. Imagine if you're a car coming north on Black Hawk and moving west on Plaza Drive. It allows additional cars to stack up there without creating a left conflict out of Black Hawk Drive.
My, my only concern is, is if you're, you're exiting that particular entrance on Black Hawk from your site, you have to be concerned about traffic coming southbound on Black Hawk, traffic going northbound on Black Hawk, traffic from the, the, going into and out of the property across the street, and also adjacent driveway coming in and out of that parking lot as well. So you have three entrances really close to each other with a very long, you know, left-hand turn lane. I, I've never seen that stack up. So, you know, I, I thought by looking at it, if it were me, I'd probably, you know, put it towards the center to, to offset them, rather than get them so close to each other.
There, there is one additional component here that's not being shown, and that's really how this site works. On this side of the building, there are large windows, and this being a competition pool, there was a thoughtful effort to restrict headlights coming into that eastern face of the building. So as an added element, this was shifted to kind of maintain the integrity of the competition pool within the building on that side of the building. And, and really maintain that glass elevation that you see on that east side of the building, and not have to restrict with landscaping, precast, et cetera.
Okay. I echo the comments about the screening on earth. It's a very good call. They stand very tall, and they'll be highly visible from people that are in the park. And then, operationally, has anything changed operationally with the Park District? I mean, can residents use this facility? Or is this going to be like 100% competitions, which I am not going to be involved with?
Either am I.
Yeah.
We have a very nice arrangement as part of our lease with Mary Ann. Mary Ann will operate it. She will run it. She will staff it and be responsible for all associated costs. All programming, however, will be run through the community center and our program guide, same as any other program, with resident and non-resident rates. There will be some additional benefits to the Park District and some of our programs for use of the facility as well. So as far as the residents are concerned, it will be like using any of our other programs, our facilities, but at no overhead or cost to Park District and Park District staff. Mary Ann will be responsible for everything else. So, as you know, and maybe Mary Ann wants to speak more to this, there's the competition pool, and then there's the smaller 25-yard pool, which is more common at most high schools. That is where Mary Ann will do her exercise classes, fitness classes, swim instruction, and just about anything else that she might want to program in there for the community.
Do I have all that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Good deal. Any programming that would be with the school district at all?
That will be up to Mary Ann.
I believe, I know she's open to conversation with them, but let you speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, currently, currently, they, you know, have a swimming pool. There was talk for years that they might do away with it. I believe this gives them the flexibility to, and it'd be very easy for them to shuttle kids over for PE classes, and we can help accommodate those things, especially, you know, obviously, the auditorium's not as busy during the day. So it would be a perfect fit for them to do some of their programming in our pool. I think that'll give them an option. It's not something that, I don't think they've made a decision yet, or I just know that there's always been talk about that. I had offered that when I had spoken to somebody there, even at the other location, and this location is probably even easier for them.
Okay. I think I mentioned to you one of the, when you were here, one of the past two times, of an organization called Dive Heart.
Yeah.
They're real special, and if you could hook up with them, that would be awesome. They basically train vets that have lost arms, legs, both quadriplegics to scuba dive. And they've been around a very long time, and their local base here. And they're looking for doing a facility of their own.
And they would utilize the, the deep pool.
Oh, for sure, without a doubt.
Yeah.
So I applaud your efforts, Mary Ann.
That's the goal. The goal is to help out as many as we can out there.
That's awesome. Awesome. Great job. I have no more questions.
Okay. Mr. Carmichael?
My comments, I think, are, reflect the ones on, on the traffic, the, the flow in and out of the facility onto, and from Black Hawk. With regard to the closure of Westmont Drive from Ogden to Plaza, previously is, is going to, Black Hawk is, is much more heavily traveled, traveled now than it was. And this is certainly going to add to that access to the fitness, the Park District Fitness Club down the street. It's going to be impacted as well. I think you have dealt with that, working with staff in an efficient way. The only question I have, the facility is going to be operated seven days a week. The paperwork was, talk, traffic and things, we're only Monday through Saturday, so I was curious about, will the facility be open on Sundays?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be open on Sunday.
Okay. And that's.
It depends on whether there's a meet. If there's a meet, there would be a little bit more traffic on the Sunday. But Sundays are the lighter day. Saturday is a bigger day for, you know, families to be at swim meets. But that would be when there's a meet. And then I think on Sundays, it wouldn't be heavy at all during the day. But I, I do believe we'll do some programming in it.
Okay.
I think that's an opportunity for a lot of organizations, you know, to use it when they can't use it during the week or something.
Well, I'm certainly supportive of this, and I wish you all the luck. Go Hawks.
Now, Commissioner Thomas.
Last couple of times, you, your team has been here, I was in support of it. And when it, when the glove didn't quite fit, I still voted for it. Now that glove's very tight. And it fits very well, and I'm also for it. And this is, this is just what we need. And I wish you the best of luck. And it makes for a lot boring, more boring meeting. That's all I have.
Okay.
Am I boring?
Most of the things that I have had concern that have been covered. So before I call for a motion, is there any other issue regarding this that should be brought up? Any questions you want answered?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to draw to the question that I had about that interest in Nori, Norielle.
Yes, sir.
How do you feel about that access being moved to the south?
I actually don't have too much concerns with it. I like how the traffic flows in and around the site. The, the business across the street is periodically busy. It's, it's off and on more in the mornings and such. I don't think there should be any concerns with it being where it's proposed.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Close the public hearing, and I'll call for a motion for site plan and landscaping approval to allow the new construction of an auditorium in Manufacturing District.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner, yes?
Me, Bartel.
Can't see these.
Sure.
And seconded by Commissioner Sharp. We have a roll call, please. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Pell is.
Recused?
Recused. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael votes yes.
Okay. Next place will be with the Village Board, and we check with the staff on that. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
And I will turn it back over to Commissioner Pell.
Good job.
Thank you. Nice job, Commissioner Van Buren. Thank you very much for stepping up to the plate there. As they're exiting the room, our next group can come up to the podium. Our next item of business is planning and zoning, item 18-011, Brian and Michelle Walsh, regarding the property located at 206 South Warwick Avenue in Westmont, for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a home addition within a required front yard setback in the R3 single-family detached residence district.
Good evening. I'm Benson Sensstrom. I'll be representing Michelle and Brian Walsh for this. What I've got here, it's pretty short and simple. I've got some dimensions I can share with you as well. I could use this thing here.
Yep.
We've got architectural drawings showing the house what it would be without a front porch. As you can see, it's very plain, and there is really no architectural detail or curb appeal to it whatsoever. We're proposing adding a front porch on, as well as a large addition in the rear that doesn't, that complies with everything. But this front porch is in question. Currently, the house sits 21, or we would be pushing to 21.96 foot of a setback, which would be a 3.0 foot encroachment. The existing foundation now encroaches where the front door portico is at, encroaches by 1.12 feet. We have gone around and collected a petition from everybody on the block, showing them the pictures and telling them what we'll be doing with the property. We have one home on the property, or one home on the block that currently is at a 16-foot only setback, which encroaches quite a bit. We've also got another home across the street that is 9.4, or 19.4 feet versus the 25, or the now 35 feet. So the homeowner has gone around and got a petition. This is every single person that lives on that block, with the exception of the residents at 222 South Warwick, which are renters, and they were not available at any time of visit to get their approval and/or signature disapproval. I've also got a site plan, not a site plan, but the class survey, showing that the existing home, you can see that little front bump out, kind of, how that already encroaches the build line. We're just trying to push that a little bit more forward to get some curb appeal. And we're, again, we're right by a big ballpark where everyone congregates, and it'd be nice to have a nicer looking home in the area, we feel. And that's really it. It's pretty simple and cut and dry.
Okay. I will turn it over and ask for a report from our staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So what you have before you is a request for a front yard setback variance. If you remember, it was probably going on two years now. We did a front yard setback text amendment that basically said that when an existing neighborhood already had homes that were closer to the street, then you could go from a normal 35-foot setback, which is what the code requires, to a 25-foot yard setback, providing the adjacent home already set the precedent in that it was not what we call a garage-forward design. So basically, it was encouragement to bring front porches closer to the street because they tend to lend quality to the older parts of the neighborhood. It's what you consider a traditional neighborhood development. So in this case, this is a, this is a Cape Cod that's existed on the site for, you know, quite some time. You have some homeowners that want to make some investment and are doing a substantial rehab to the backside of the, the property. They meet all other requirements, so they meet all other setbacks, lock coverage. Actually, lock coverage was an issue when we started. They actually remedied that pretty quickly and are taking out some of the, the driveway to remedy that. In this case, the applicant felt very strongly that the need for a front porch on this home would lend not only to the quality of the home, but the quality of the facade and the quality of the neighborhood. So although they are removing kind of the little front porch portico entry that's there, which already does exist in the 25 setback that would be permitted by about an extra foot, to add a front porch with the existing walls and foundations where they are, and to have what I would call a usable front porch, six-foot depth, they need to request a variance of 3, 3.1 feet. And if you have ever seen a, a newer-built subdivision home where they put a front porch on it, and you can barely fit a chair on it to make it usable, you will know that a six-foot depth front porch is, is a smarter approach than designing a front porch that meets a setback which would only be about three feet deep. So it's 3.1 setback encroachment. I think it works out to about a 12% request. And as the applicant has stated, and I've wrote it, written in the staff report, there is precedent immediately to the south of this and across the street where the, it already exists. As always, I'm, I'm available for any questions.
Do you have any comments?
No. I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak, either for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll move to our commissioners. Yes?
I've got one comment. We have the petition signed by the surrounding property owners. If you could give that to Mr. Chairman Van Buren for our record. And if you need a copy, we can get a copy back to you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Greg.
No problem. Great. We'll move to our commissioners now. I'll begin with Commissioner Bartel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very impressed with the fact that you did the survey for the neighbors and that they are supportive. It shows really a continuity of, of neighborhood, which is good, and that there is a precedent set. So I really, honestly, I'm supportive. I don't see any issues with this at all. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, I'm supportive of the application, and it's consistent with what we've approved before. Staff is in a, in a position to, to provide their positive recommendation. I don't really have any problems with it. I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael?
I agree. It's a very reasonable request, and, and the porch is absolutely in character with the other homes along Warwick, and I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren? I also support it. I think it's a good idea. I went and looked at the property and the environment, and it'll fit just fine. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Like everybody else has said, the house to the south is already pushing forward. To the north, that house isn't even there. It's facing north, and, and so that's not even in consideration. You're going, your porch is going to be great, and it'll, it'll, doesn't even matter what you do in the back, not really. But the front, I'm a porch- you do in the back, not really, but the front, I'm a porch person, so I'm in support of this. Behave yourself with the back part. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Porchperson. Commissioner Sharp?
I am also in favor, these kind of requests do cause me a little bit of concern just because we already have the twenty-five foot exception for these kind of cases. So I try to look very carefully at the adjacent properties and see, it's kind of up to us to use judgment on this, on what we feel the median really is on this street, and that's really the purpose of the code and the purpose of us reviewing this. And I think you guys are well within the average of what's around you, so it's appropriate. And obviously, as all the other commissioners have said, it looks great, it's going to add a lot of value to the home and the whole neighborhood, and I'm fully supportive. Good luck.
Thank you. I too had the same initial impression after reading this, I was a little concerned with the encroachment towards the sidewalk, but after visiting the property twice, I think Joe summarized it best when he said this is a traditional neighborhood, it doesn't come out any better than that. And I think the porch is absolutely indicative of that type of neighborhood, and I think it's an asset, an enhancement, and I think it's a, it's a great factor for the entire block, I think it brings people together, so it has my support also. Any other comments from any of the commissioners or from our staff?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item one eight dash zero one one, Brian and Michelle Walsh regarding the property at two oh six South Warwick Avenue in Westmont for A, a zoning code variance to allow for construction of a home addition within a required front yard setback in the R three single-family detached residence district.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes. So you have our recommendation that'll be forwarded on to the Village Board, Joe will contact you with coordinating where you'll appear before the Village Board on some upcoming Thursday night. Best of luck.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Continuing on, planning and zoning item zero one two, McDonald's USA LLC regarding the property located at thirty-one East Sixty-third Street in Westmont for the following: A, a special use permit request to operate a restaurant with an associated drive-in slash drive-through in the C one commercial business district; B, a zoning code variance request to allow parking in the front yard setback in the C one commercial business district; C, a zoning code variance request to increase the number, excuse me, the maximum number of menu boards permitted in the C one commercial business district; D, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum size of a trash enclosure permitted in the side and rear yard setbacks in the C one commercial business district; E, the site and landscaping plan approval. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Kenneth Sack, I'm with Watermark Engineering representing McDonald's. Tonight with me I have Mr. L. Daniels, he's with McDonald's Corporation. We are here tonight to seek a special use permit to upgrade the existing tandem drive-through at the existing McDonald's site. We're looking to upgrade it to a side-by-side drive-through system. They feel that side-by-side drive-through system is much more efficient and much more practical for the McDonald's needs today, for their drive-through percentages. With these improvements, McDonald's is also requesting three variances. These variances include parking within a thirty-foot setback along Sixty-third Street, an increase of menu boards from two menu boards to four menu boards, and an increase in the size of the trash corral from a hundred square feet to four hundred and seventy square feet within the rear inside setbacks. With regards to the signage, even though we are increasing the number of signs, it's important to note that the square footage of the menu boards and such will be reduced. So right now, I'd like to review some of the key points of the site, if anybody has, I'll be happy to answer any questions they may have after I make this brief presentation. One of the items I'd like to talk about is the existing access points. With this side-by-side addition, we are not changing any of the access points, there's currently two points on Sixty-third Street, those are going to remain the same, there's also access point in the rear of the site that comes from Cass Avenue that has east into the site. None of these, again, none of these access points are going to be changed, they're all going to remain the same. And the access point from Cass leading to the rear of the site, we have appropriate easements and such for ingress egress. The other point I want to make is that there are no building modifications or signage modifications to the building, just want to make that clear. Parking, there is existing, right now there are forty-four stalls existing, we are proposing forty-four stalls. As mentioned before, we are seeking the variance up on the thirty-foot setback to keep that parking number at forty-four. We have changed the site around a little bit, we've moved some spots here and there in order to accommodate that number and keep it as it is today. Vehicular circulation, it's going to remain more or less the same. It's Sixty-third Street, customers are going to come in, go counterclockwise, it's very intuitive, circulation's more or less going to remain the same for the site, so shouldn't be any differences with that. We are proposing new concrete ADA stalls that are going to be ADA compliant, and we are also proposing a new brick trash enclosure. It's bigger in size, but it will be able to accommodate the refuse and recycling, it'll be brick in nature to match the building, it'll also be screened, and it will also be more easily accessible for the trash company. Again, the crux of the project is to replace the tandem drive-through. It's currently one lane, has two menu board, two order points and two menu boards, we're looking to upgrade that to two-lane system, it will have a menu board and a preview board in each lane. This will increase efficiencies, it'll reduce stacking, and then it'll reduce the possibilities of any stacking getting near Sixty-third Street. With regard to that, the existing site with the tandem will typically hold about six cars in its queue, from the cash booth to the order point, with the side-by-side system, it'll easily accommodate eleven cars. Keep in mind, we'll, we will be able to have five additional cars in the stacking and queuing, and in it is, to keep in mind is that the drive-through will keep moving. If somebody, in a tandem situation, if somebody holds up an order, it keeps the whole drive-through backed up. With a side-by-side system, if one lane is slow, you have the other lane that hopefully will keep things moving, keep the, keep the drive-through system moving, and therefore there will be a little possibility of backups. And with regards to landscaping, we meet the village's requirements, there's been, with the new side-by-side designer opportunities for new landscaping, they will do a refresh on the existing stuff, make sure it's in good condition, but we've taken the opportunity to add more landscaping to the site. One of the key points is along Sixty-third Street, we are adding more perennials and shrubs along Sixty-third Street to enhance that area as well. So there, I'll let Joe take over from there. If there, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much, and I will, thank you for the introduction, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what you have before you is, one of the first topics is the special use for a drive-through. So when McDonald's approached this, we always go into our historical files, and in an ideal world, there was a drive-through that was approved on this site in the past. This, the construction of the McDonald's actually predates our requirement for a special use for a drive-through. So in most respects, it would typically be considered legal, nonconforming, and grandfathered as it says. Because they're making a modification to it, we take this as an opportunity to look over the special use standards and make sure that the specific requirement of traffic congestion and pedestrian safety is addressed. And it's an opportunity to establish that with the current user, so that is why they are requesting a special use. It's the modification to the drive-through that's a trigger. Now, there are several variances being requested, and that's because this project just was over the cusp on not being able to meet the minimum standards. So for example, the parking situation, which is forty-four, there are additional nineteen spaces that actually are secured through a cross parking and cross access easement on the south side of the property. Still doesn't bring them up to today's standards, which I want to say is in the eighties. It doesn't quite bring them there, so, so that they could remain legal, nonconforming in their parking, staff number one did request that they provide a traffic or a parking study on the site, just in case there were any discussion topics that the commissioners wanted to bring up. But also, that is why they provided the two additional spaces to make sure that they didn't reduce the amount of parking at all. To do that, they have to, the only space that they could find was in the front yard setback. So they are going, they are requesting, I think, to a twenty point one foot to put, technically, one space, one full space is sitting in that, but we stated two spaces because there is a small portion of one of those spaces that's in the front yard setback. They will be removing what I would say is some outdated landscape where these spaces are now, and then putting in screening landscape as required by our landscape code to make sure that the parking is screened. And just to give an example, the Sixty-third and Cass project, which we heard last month, they were at a twelve-foot setback, I think, in their front yard parking variance. As the applicant stated, they are refreshing the landscape on the entire site, so we didn't just look at what are the requirements based on this change, we said, does the entire site meet current landscape? So for example, there's a small drive-through aisle that gets you around the front of the building, that is not currently screened, they are providing all-new landscape in front of there to screen that aisle as well. They are moving what I would say is two pieces of trash enclosure, so they've got one large trash enclosure that's adjacent to the building, and then they have a dumpster that's been added over time at the very rear of the property where they're now proposing this four hundred and seventy square foot trash enclosure. So they, basically, they're going to take multiple dumpsters and put it in that trash enclosure. Now, I usually have an exception for trash enclosures in the side and rear are setback, it just states that it can't be more than a hundred square feet. In this case, it's four hundred and seventy square feet, so they need to ask for a variance for the difference between a hundred and four seventy, or three hundred and seventy square feet. It is sitting where the existing dumpster is, they have provided screening on two sides, so the, to the south where the school is, and to the north to the parking lot. It is directly abutting the fence to the neighboring property to the east, which is actually an auto body repair shop. Menu boards, our code is very specific, even though we updated the sign code a year ago, and I'm not going to bore you with the updates, it did always have a clause in there that said, "Drive-throughs are permitted one sign at fifty square feet," and that would be considered exempted. So if any drive-through just had one sign and they stayed under fifty square feet, you'd never see or discuss it here at this, this meeting. This property received a variance for all their signage back in two thousand and eleven. When they did that, they had two menu boards, but they exempted one, so they counted the second menu board as a variance, and it was at about forty-eight square feet. They are technically increasing the number of signs because now they would like a tandem drive-through that, or I'm sorry, a side-by-side drive-through that has double the amount of signs, but rather than having two large signs like they have now, it would be one, which I think you called a pre-order or a smaller board.
Pre-rows.
And then one larger one. So by nature, the code doesn't take into account a double drive-through, so they have to ask for an increase by two additional signs. But it is actually an overall reduction of the square footage because the pre-order boards are much smaller than the existing board that's there. And it is for efficiency so that you can kind of get your order squared away before you ever approach this, and I think, as the applicant indicated, what they are trying to do is remedy not only increased sales, but also the fact that right now, you go there on a early morning and the stacking for the drive-through can be all the way out to Sixty-third at times. This is to remedy getting cars through the drive-through, to avoid the stacking and therefore make it less traffic congestion and I think a little bit more pedestrian-friendly because it's not always wonderful for pedestrians early in the morning there. And then finally, site and landscape approval, because this is a commercial property, we are approving what they are presenting to us. As I stated earlier, the landscaping is being brought up to standards, and as always, we are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any comments? No? Great. At this point, I will open up the public hearing, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak either for or against this item? Please approach the podium and sign in. Don't all come up at once, let's do it orderly, looks like we have no one. We'll move over to the commissioners then, we'll begin with Commissioner Lavoy.
Oh boy. I'm usually not a big fan of marginal geometrics, and when I look at the parking alongside, you get to back out with the drive-through, through cars that are stacked on the drive-throughs, is that what's really happening here?
From my understanding, yes.
So you have, you know, limited sight distance when you're backing out a vehicle, you don't know if a car is coming or not coming, I'm just not a big fan. Yeah, if it were me, I'd rather just ask for the variation and not have the parking spaces there at all, because I don't want to, you know, approve something that would cause an accident. So, you know, when somebody's backing out, of course, somebody's going to be cordial enough to say, "Come on," but then there's a car coming around, coming off of Cass Avenue that is trying to get in the turn, in the drive-through lane as quickly as possible, and now you've got a potential accident right in front of those parking spaces. So I'm not a big fan of that. I understand your site doesn't allow you to do much more than what you're doing, but it just, I'm just safety conscious and I just don't, I'm not a fan of that configuration. Also not a big fan as our chairman mentioned, and staff mentioned about the stacking that could go out all the way on the Sixty-third Street, and I've been in that, in that drive-through lane, and it does regularly, and that has not been remedied. You know, so I don't know, you know, how you could remedy that, I know that the one small little curb line, if you want to pull it up in more detail, down to the drive-through, that curb line that you're proposing, oops, I'll wait till you get it up.
Yeah, sorry about that. Having a hard time here.
Is to, that one curb line is to prevent cars coming in off of Cass and jumping into the, into the drive-through, is that correct? Oh, went too far.
I'm sorry, I'm not, okay, down by the side-by-side?
Keep going, keep going, so that curb line just south of the drive-through, you've got that little hook curb there.
Yes.
Right, right on the left-hand side where that, that white spot is, right there.
Yes.
That little curb return, I think is intended, what your intention is, and tell me if I'm wrong, is to prevent people from coming off of Cass Avenue and jumping into the turn lane, or into the drive-through.
Well, it's designed to keep the counterclockwise circulation coming off of Cass, so we don't anticipate anybody coming from Cass using that as an entrance, they will have to go all the way to the right.
They'd have to go all the way around, yeah.
Yes. No, there are no ways that intended to let two-way traffic through there, that's strictly an exit point. So that, that defines that.
Is it wide enough to put two cars?
You could, you had to, but it's, I don't think it's twenty-four feet wide, so I would say, no, it's not, not designed, we're not designing it for two cars, that's for sure. We can, what we can do there too is we can put "do not enter" signs there as well to encourage people not to take that left into that oncoming lane. We are not encouraging any, any two-way flow on this site.
Yeah, I can see that on the picture, what I'm getting at is, is that, you know, if you're coming off Cass Avenue from the entrance at the bank.
Yes.
And you come in, I think that's to discourage, you know, cutting into the, one reason for that curb is to discourage the that curb is to discourage the, uh...
Yeah.
...motion, and you're forcing you to go all the way around, right?
Yes.
Well, secondly, I'm looking at the parking, you're looking at my initial issue, where if you taper that, that point of egress where the black arrow is down to where a car fits through it and no larger, you may be able to get more parking along the back row there.
Uh, we can look at reducing the size of that aisle.
Because that double aisle, that really, it, it's, it's an opportunity for somebody to try to do that.
That's currently how...
And we're short on parking, and I'd rather see you do taper that down to a, a one width and increase the park by one or two spaces.
We can definitely look at, uh, shortening...
And take away the parking spaces on this side of the building, because it's going to have cars in all the time.
Uh, yeah, we definitely look at that. And that way, it'll, it'll just totally discourage two-way flow there, along with "Do Not Enter."
I may interject, though. The only problem with that is that's exactly where our, our truck comes in to offload the, uh...
Where?
Stock. So they come in here.
Yes.
Offload on this side of the building, so he's going to have a new room. So if you make that too narrow, he's not going to have to turn.
Is the direction going, isn't the, I know those cars don't suggest this, but can't you go back out to Cass Avenue?
Yes.
This direction, yeah.
So why would, why would reducing the width of that drive impede the truck traffic?
You know, the trailer doesn't exactly follow like the car, so they'll, they'll tail over to the right or left, depending on which way you're turning. So the, the turning radius is much larger for a truck. So you want to be careful if you go narrow it down too much, so you're running over, if you're going to landscape, if you're running over the landscape. It's just a horn. We can look at it, of course, but I want to look at the truck.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, on the parking row on the south, it appears to be diagonal the way it exists today. If that were to be turned 90 degrees, would that increase the parking spaces along that whole drive-out? Appears to be enough room for traffic motion, and the drive aisle width to the south of there appears to be oversized.
Um, yes, typically, when you do go from angle to 90-degree stalls, you will increase the number of stalls. That's, um, that would probably be close. We would have to work with the, there's easements over that right now, so we'd have to work with the other people that are involved with the easements to change that.
Well, that's just drainage easements, correct?
No, it's parking, it's ingress, egress, it's drainage, it's got all, all those easements are running through this whole area through here.
So all I'm asking you is, is if you restrike it to a 90-degree park, or better yet, put diagonal parking on the other side of that facing south, you might solve your parking problem and not, not have a conflict like you have.
We can look into that.
Like, how wide is it from where that car is parked all the way to the back curb line?
Um, I would say it's probably, oh, boy. Close to 30 feet.
30 feet?
Close to 30 feet.
Gosh, it looks much more than that. To me, from the, from the parked car on the diagonal to the, that's parked in the south near the dumpster, all the way to the curb line to the south property line is much more than, than that.
I would say the edge of striping to the back curb is probably right around 30 feet. Plus or minus? Plus or minus? I mean, it's, it's much more than 24, wait, 24 feet, obviously, so there would be ample opportunity for it.
Yeah, but if you put diagonal parking at a sharper angle, you could probably get a double stack in there and solve your, your parking problem.
Um, we'd have to look at that. I don't know if we'd have quite that much room. We have to take a look at that.
Okay.
The one thing to, taken into account, too, is that, and joking, help me out on that, is there, in this easement area...
There are approximately 19 additional stalls. Just want to make that clear. It's just not these, I'll say, six here and three here. It goes further down the line towards Cass. So that they have rights to it for easements.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael, please.
Hi. I, I have a couple of questions on the traffic flow. McDonald's favors the dual lanes over the, over the tandem. It reduces the stacking, you can stack more cars. Doesn't that, doesn't that introduce conflict between the inner and the outer as they're turning into the delivery lanes?
Uh, yeah, that's kind of...
The car on the right is, is going to have to go ahead or behind, and...
Yeah, that's, uh...
Two lanes coming together there constantly, how do, how do you deal with that?
Uh, well, it's, uh, that is kind of the concept. Typically, you'll come in one lane, they'll split, there'll be signage, they'll say any lane at any time, they'll indicate arrows, so you know they either go secondary lane or the primary lane. Then when they place their order, it's fairly intuitive for them to merge back together. There's an item they have, an item they put in the drive-through lane is a merge point striping to help facilitate with that. But more or less, it should be fairly intuitive for the customers to merge back in there. We make it geometrically as possible to make that easy for them.
You've got to kind of be polite.
Yeah, well, these days, I don't know.
This should never work in Italy.
That's the idea. We always talk about things we can do with customers and such, but a lot of it comes down to people just watching what they're doing, being cautious. And the McDonald's side-by-sides are becoming, it's almost second nature to their business now. So I think a lot of people are very familiar with the McDonald's double drive-through.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I don't, I don't have any, any disagreement. Are you a member of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce?
No.
Why not?
I don't...
Just asking. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Do you want, do you need me to be?
Well, of course.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren.
I, too, was concerned about the, I'll actually question why you would go through all this trouble to go through a dual as opposed to a tandem, but apparently you've studied this pretty well, and you have plenty of experience in other locations to know how it works and why it works better, so I'll take your word on that. The other question was, you're already deficient on parking, and that traffic survey that, or that parking survey that you did clarified that very well, and I'm glad we asked for it, I'm glad that you came forward with it, because it shows that even at your busiest times, you're not maxing out your parking, so...
Yes.
I'm, I'm in favor of your...
In addition to that, too, with the on-site parking, like we mentioned, we have the 19 stalls that kind of act as the overflow. So there's, there's plenty of parking.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
This is my, my McDonald's.
Okay.
And I have never seen parking maxed out there. On the sides, I, I have, you know, of course, but as you go through the dual lanes ordering in that, it's kind of like, what works best is zipper effect where a car comes in from here, a car comes in here, a car comes in here, and that's like merging into a, off an off-ramp onto a highway, you know? It's going to work, you know? You, you have human nature, and you, you can't legislate that away, so, you know, you just give them as good directions as possible signage, and the additional signage is all at the rear of the building. It's not like you're going down 63rd Street and going, "Whoa," you know, "Look at all those signs." You can't see any of them, you know? So I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp, please.
Hi, good evening. I would first mirror a lot of Commissioner Lavoy's thinking about the parking. I appreciate his different opportunities that you might be able to look at, because essentially, I, having read the traffic study, like, looked at the parking and hearing testimony up here about how the parking is sufficient, and that's all without the 19 extra spaces that are in an easement, I don't think I can support a brand-new variance for an encroachment on 63rd Street. I love the landscaping on 63rd Street. I think that is much needed if you look along the street there for improved landscaping, but a whole new variance for parking, just to keep the same number of 44 spots, that seems to be nothing special about that number. That just happens to be what it was.
Here's one of the problems procedurally. The parking is legal non-conforming, and I think when staff looked at this, they, and looked at our code, it said, "You can continue a legal non-conformity as long as you don't substantially, in the case of a building, enlarge it, or in the case of parking, reduce it." And the fear is by, with the drive-through improvements that they're doing, they're actually losing some parking spaces, so to allow the legal non-conformity to continue, and without having to publish for a parking variance, they added two spaces up front that, that happened to encroach, because that's the only place to put them. Even though the parking study...
I kind of predicted all of that. I mean, I know that, that asking for a parking variance would require a reposting, but I, I don't feel that this really meets the requirements of a variance, because this doesn't seem to be very site-specific. We're just, you're actually adding program, which is pushing your parking into a setback. I mean, it seems to me that almost all commercial property could develop a plan where they add program, and now they can't fit the required parking. So I don't, myself, in my opinion, understand the unique circumstance that would justify a variance for, for the front encroachment, so. I think, you know, Commissioner Lavoy, his ideas, I mean, if you can fit two parking spaces somewhere on this plan and still keep your 44, then there's not really any issue. And I think overall, the site plan works well, the landscaping enhancement is great. And from what I understand, you're saying that since you're now doing two lanes, the backing up on 63rd Street will improve.
Yes.
So I'm fully supportive of the landscape plan, I just can't support the variance.
One thing to keep in mind, we, with all this, the, the additional parking up front, we are increasing the pervious area on the site by about 1,400 square feet. So even though we're asking for that variance to go into that setback, we are substantially adding green area to, to the site, and it gives us opportunity for more landscaping, upgrade the landscaping, and meet the landscape code. So I'd like you to consider that as well.
Yeah, my, my ideal would be lose the two spots there and find them somewhere else in the site. That'd be the win-win for everybody.
It's, it's a pretty tight site, and unfortunately, we can't use those 19 stalls to our count. That's...
No, I just use that as reference, you know, to, to kind of flesh out the idea that really, it's, it's not, it's not an actual problem, it's a, it's a kind of a code zoning problem. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Murtaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, my question is, when you have the prevention of stacking so that you go with the dual lanes, is there only one cashier? In other words, will it increase efficiency if you have the same number of cars, but only one person taking the money and then the second booth getting the food?
I might defer that...
Maybe I could answer that. In our drive-through studies, and we've been doing these for a long time now, part of the, part of the element of the drive-through is the geometry. To answer one of your questions about how you, you flow into the drive-through, it's designed in such a manner that as you enter the, the drive-through, you're making a decision at that point whether one lane's moving quicker or the other, and it's somewhat intuitive, it's human nature to pick the lanes going faster. So you will naturally migrate to the lane that's somewhat moving faster. Then at the merge point on the other end, it's designed in such a way that the, what we've studied is, the longest part of the drive-through experience is the actual order. So what, we've designed it so that the cars from the order point to the cashier to the present is done in such a manner that we have it timed out with the food manufacturing process, that you're actually, by the time you get to the, the present booth, your food is being presented to you. So to answer your question about cashier, just can one handle it? The answer is yes, because you're only taking one cash at a time. You're taking simultaneously two orders, but you're cashing out the one. But it's all a matter of seconds and time from the order to the present.
Okay.
And it gets kind of scientific after that, I won't go into that for you, but it's all, it's all in the geometry of how the drive-through's laid out. So we give them orders, we've, we've designed drive-through lays out, layouts for engineers, which they have to model. And that, that's really how they're, it's dictated that they're modeling.
Okay.
It does work, trust me.
It works.
We wouldn't do it otherwise.
I'm supportive of the new ADA stalls. I think that's important. And the trash enclosure, to move it all to one end, the corner?
Yes.
All the trash?
Yes.
So take the one that's right in the center there as you go through and, and move that.
Yeah, that's going to be removed, and I think it'll create a, a better customer experience.
Okay.
When they're coming through the drive-through lane, they won't be looking at a trash enclosure anymore. It'll be in the southwest, southeast corner of the site.
And it's sort of shielded?
Yeah, it's going to be screened, it's going to be brick, it's going to have a cedar wood fence.
Do you have concerns about snow removal right now?
Um...
It's a tight space, and that's, I guess, the reason for the question.
I would have to leave that up to the snowfall driver.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't anticipate, I don't, whatever they're doing now, I assume is working well, and they...
Okay.
I think they maintain their sites pretty well, so, so the customer feels safe and is very accessible around the sites.
And assuming it's approved, your timeline is fairly soon to begin this?
Uh, yes, they'd, with approval, we'd like to go in for permits, and I think they're going to start as soon as possible. They approximate, approximately four weeks or so for, for the project.
Will it be open during the time of construction? Will you have the...
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions. What's prompting this? Has there been an ownership change in the, in that business?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, it was formerly owned by McDonald's Corporation, or McCacko, we call them. The new franchise, I think he took it over May, April, May, Nick Corey. He would have been here tonight, but he had a previous engagement, couldn't make it, so...
And, so, I know you said it, but just to hear it again, so you're only doing exterior changes at this time?
Correct.
There won't be the new ownership?
They went through, I think the...
Won't be doing anything on the inside?
Yeah, the inside, I think they did what we refer to as an MRP. They did that, I think, about a year ago, maybe two years ago.
Um, this one is a, a little off the subject, but just out of curiosity. So on the plans, I noticed we have the McDonald's address in Jory Boulevard in Oakbrook. In the future, will we see these then with the Chicago address on there?
No, you won't. The reason for that is I work for the Chicago region, and the Chicago regional office is still on Jory Boulevard in Oakbrook.
And staying?
Yeah. Yes, it is. And I'm thankful for that.
Um, I'm a supporter of the double menu boards with the, the side-by-side. I'm one of those people, I think, that as soon as you come around that corner to getting into a drive-through or any kind of line, it's always your mind is going, which one is going to go faster? And I'm always frustrated when you can't read the board when you're waiting in line. So I think that's a great idea, the fact that you're lessening the square feet, that's, that's a double plus as far as that's concerned, but...
Keep in mind, too, that they're digital.
They're what?
They're digital.
Mm-hmm.
A little easier to read, a little easier on the eyes.
Good. I think that's great. Trash enclosure, I don't have a problem with the expanded size on that. To me, more trash means more business, means more sales tax revenue for the village, and means a healthier business for the ownership that's involved with it. So I think that's all a win-win situation. We can measure many things by one man's trash, I think you can sort of say. I, too, have some questions about the whole parking thing. I've been, you know, most Americans have been through many different McDonald's lots, and, you know, they, they, they exist in almost as many forms as there are McDonald's. But I will say this, at peak times, they're, they can be a challenge. You're, you're at the forefront of the drive-through business, this is only going to bring more people. While it may lessen the lines, I'm not so sure that, that I can go with that. I think it's going to attract even more people, so I'm not sure that the lines are going to get any less. But backing out is always a problem at McDonald's. And there are several key spots here. Now, I like the idea that we've basically done an expansion of the landscape, and the pervious areas increased by, I think you said, 1,400 square feet?
1,400 square feet, approximately.
That's sizable for a small lot like this.
Yes.
Um, and basically, the trade-off is for two spots in somewhat of a dubious area. Now, there have been a couple of ideas floated here tonight, and I think I'd like to just sort of leave you with this. I like landscaping, I support that at all times. I support that at all times. I like the addition of green space on this lot. I support that. I understand where you're going with the extra two spots, but between now and the time you go before planning and zone, excuse me, before now and the time you would move ahead to the Village Board, if this is a favorable recommendation, you decide to do that, I would strongly take a look at some of those options and see whether there is an opportunity to gain a spot here or a spot there by some of the things that were brought up tonight. Because there did seem to be some possibility of doing that and eliminating some of that congestion up in the front area.
Okay.
That would be my comments to you.
For clarification purposes, the stalls on the east and west side of the building, the parallel ones, the five that are on the west side of the building and the three on the east side of the building, those are going to be dedicated for employees-
Employees?
And managers.
Long-term?
Yes. And so, we're trying to encourage them, those spots to be used for that. That way, you don't have conflicts with people backing out. Only during maybe shift changes, you might have a car or two moving and such. But we are, like I said, for clarification, I just want to make that known, that's what those stalls are going to be dedicated for.
I understand, and I would have expected that, and I also assume that your shift changes are timed to be non-peak hours. So you would, theoretically, you would have a minimal line at that particular point, so it would be good. And, you know, anybody who's been through the drive-through knows, you got to try to let people back out, because the faster you get people out, the sooner you can move ahead. I mean, so we're all familiar with that. I'm just suggesting that if there's a way to take a look at that between the time period while you're waiting, it would be something that would be to your advantage to review with our staff. Those are the end of my comments, so I am in support of the project, and I just ask that you take a look at that as you move forward. Do I have any other comments from other commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, during the testimony here, I did recall that I had visited this particular McDonald's, too, and in one particular instance, I had my trailer on the back of my vehicle. And I actually parallel parked along the back curb line, right in front of the dumpster. It's not striped, but it's, there's plenty of room to do that.
Okay.
If you look at it, I mean, there's, there's a parallel space along that back curb, I think you could probably get four more spaces in there. So, and as I said earlier, I'm not in support of it because I see a conflict that could cause an accident, and it's enough for me to say that you need to rework the plan and take advantage of some of these other opportunities and think this through and bring the good solution back, you know? So I'm not in favor of approving a traffic conflict like that. I think, I think it needs some more thought, and I think it needs to be, there's plenty of opportunity there to add that landscaping back up on 63rd, get the spaces that you need, and avoid that conflict.
Any other commissioners have comments?
I have a question for Attorney Zemanek. Is there a legal way to count a few of these shared access spaces towards their, I guess, legal non-conforming count? Would they have to have actual ownership of those spaces as opposed to just access?
So, and Joe, maybe we can brainstorm this together. I know our parking regulations and the zoning ordinance do allow for off-site parking as long as they're located within 500 feet of the property, and there's a cross-access easement or cross-parking easement recorded against title. Sounds like there's an easement recorded against title, it's within the required distance separation. What I think is unclear to me, just because I haven't looked at it, is whether that can count towards the minimum required parking on the property itself. And Joe, I don't know if you know that answer.
I know all the answers.
Oh.
So regardless of whether that parking is counted-
The record show-
Or not, it's a loss of two. That, and we've had lots of discussions with the applicant, whether we include that, you know, so whether I say it's 44 plus the 19, so what, 63? Or whether we say it's the 44, it's a loss of two. And whether we look at it that way, what I informed the applicant, and I did with my best forwarded knowledge, I said, "Well, if you need to ask for a variance, then you are rightfully asking for a variance between the difference of, I want to say it's 84 to 40-something," which is a significant variance because there was no variance on record. When in reality, it's a loss of two, it's actually documenting a variance for the property. So, yes, I would typically allow the extra spaces, but it's still deficient, the overall requirement, if we're actually doing an analysis of it. What I, well, I will note, and I had this discussion early on with the applicant, those properties to the south where you'd like to add the additional parking, we did say look into options. Can you re-strike that? The original approved plan on this actually had all those as 90-degree spaces, not angled. And there is a loss of two spaces in there when they decided to angle them many years ago when they re-strike the property. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, you don't have control of that property, and that's why you didn't want to investigate trying to make changes to that property because it's owned by the bank, it's not owned by them. They just have rights to park there. So I'm not going to say that that's not an option, that they couldn't look at re-striping, moving the striping to the other side of the aisle. I do have concerns that if we're budding the parking up against the property line, then it probably should be screened, and I don't know if that curb cut gives it enough space to landscape it to the property to the south. And the other thing is, and we really haven't discussed it, that is the stormwater management area, and that will fill up during rain events, and the spaces to the north is a little bit more out of it than the spaces if you moved them to the south. So we did have all these discussions early on with the applicant. I posed to the applicant, "Well, you can ask for a variance to parking," which it's not formally a reduction, it's not a two-parking-space variance, it's a much larger variance you're asking for. Or you can request a variance to the parking in the setback." So I know you had something to add, John.
Well, if we, when considering the overall existing parking, we take into account the parking on the adjacent property subject to the easement. I know they're losing two parking spaces on-site, but if they gain it off-site, and that's all considered for their overall parking count, I think it's a, it's a wash.
I agree, and it was because they didn't want to, they don't have control of it, that that was not their approach to this. Is that a solution? Yes, and I think we discussed that early on, that you could find those two extra spaces in that area. Now, it doesn't remedy the backing into the drive aisle where they've kind of tucked those other seven spaces in there that they're calling employee spaces, but it could potentially remedy the two parking spaces that they are only gaining by doing the front yard setback variance.
That's something to keep in mind. We don't own that prop, McDonald's does not own that property. They have easements across all that.
Does the easement document control whether it's diagonal or straight-in parking? Because the-
That I don't know offhand.
Oftentimes, they don't get quite to that detail.
Right.
All right, so your options tonight are, obviously, vote this up or down, send it off to the Village Board. You guys can do your investigation. If there's some new variance or significant change, it will come back to you. If it's a matter of losing a variance for the front yard setback by gaining parking somewhere else that's already existing, that's not a major change, that can get approved by the Village Board without coming back to you. The other option is to motion to postpone this till next month and see what they come up with, so you get to consider all the options anew. I don't know what the timing is for the applicant.
They'd like to do the project this year.
Mr. Chair, I just don't think we have the right solution here.
I think I would, I would propose that we go ahead with the motion. I like the idea that Greg suggested that they take a look at the options, considering all that came was brought up tonight, rather than pull this thing up. I think it could be resolved, at least a lot of this. I think we're all in agreement that there is not a deficiency of parking spaces. It's the routing and the, and especially the pilot to get one for the ordering. But that's, that's my thought, and so I would, I would move that we go ahead with making motion on it.
Okay.
I agree. I agree to vote on it tonight and not delay it.
I do also. Okay.
Call for a motion?
First, any other comments or questions or anything? All right. I will close the public hearing on this. And we will examine item planning and zoning, item 18-012. I will entertain a motion for McDonald's USA LLC regarding the property of 31 East 63rd Street, Westmont, for A, a special use permit request to operate a restaurant with an associated drive-in slash drive-through in the C1 Commercial Business District.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Carmichael. Comment or discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Yes.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion for item B, a zoning code variance request to allow parking in the front yard setback in the C1 Commercial Business District.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Bartel. Comments, questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. I will entertain a motion for item C, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of menu boards permitted in the C1 Commercial Business District.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Bartel. Comments, discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. I will entertain a motion for item D, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum size of a trash enclosure permitted in the side and rear yard setbacks in the C1 Commercial Business District.
So moved? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Comments or discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Oh, Chairman Pill, sorry.
Yes. I will entertain a motion for item E, a site and landscaping plan approval.
So moved? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Thomas. Comments or discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Okay, you have our, our recommendation. There was quite a bit of discussion on this particular plan, and I think before you appear before the Village Board, it might be to your advantage to take a look at this and see if there's some maneuvering that can be done to take into account some of the commissioners' comments and recommendations.
Sure.
Joe will coordinate with you on your appearance before the Village Board. It'll be on a Thursday night sometime in the upcoming future. Thank you very much, and best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All righty, continuing on now, our final event of the evening, planning and zoning item 18-013, the ATG Trust number 96-311, regarding the property located at 41 North Cass Avenue in Westmont, for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a craft brewery tavern in the B1 Limited Business District. B, zoning code variance request to permit a craft brewery tavern within the required 1,000-foot separation from a school, approximately 800 feet of separation shown where code requires 1,000 feet of separation as a special condition for a special use permit. And C, a zoning code variance request to reduce the total required number of parking spaces for a craft brewery tavern in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dan Bar. With me are my partners Heidi Bark and Heather Whitlock. So, as you mentioned, we are, we open a craft brewery. It also has a, we also have a coffee roasting component as well, so it can be open in the mornings to serve the morning commuters. What this is, is our current proposed layout on this, and so in this area, you're in the, see if I can get this right, in the rear, this is the production area, completely closed off from the tavern area in the front. So, and then, as far as the special use variance that you're requesting, the production area is completely self-contained. The only venting that happens is mostly steam. When you're making beer, it's sort of along the same lines as making a soup or a tea. So it, since you're boiling liquid, you have to vent the steam, but that's, it goes out the top, and there's, there's really no contaminants to it at all. It's all organic, things like that. As far as the tavern goes, the only entrance, legal entrance to tavern is the, these front doors right here that open onto Cass Avenue. We had considered the idea of putting a roll-up door here along Irving, but we've, we've kind of laid that to the side for the moment. That may be something down the line, maybe a couple of years, but for right now, it's not in the, in the works. So all the patrons would be coming in, there's parking here along Irving, so they would be coming in through this front door, but not through the neighborhoods back here. So, and then, as far as the effects on the community, it's, it tends to be hard to say what the exact effects are going to be, but generally speaking, craft breweries, when they come into an area, they improve the area because the clientele that's attracted tends to bring money, disposable income with them, and obviously, with the, with the metro station there, people will be walking up the street from that direction quite a bit, which means they're passing all of the other businesses on the way in and out. There's restaurants and things like that. So it just, it's, overall, they've kind of been shown to be really good for an area when they move in, so. And then, these are, it's, even though it's being termed as a tavern, we're not, it's not your traditional tavern. You're not looking at people going and sitting for many hours at a time and drinking as much alcohol as they can possibly fit. This is, craft breweries are for appreciation. The people that go there, they're looking for flavors and aromas, they're not looking for, nobody wants to get, fall down drunk in a craft brewery. They want to get, they just want to appreciate, you know, try something new and appreciate it. So it's, it's definitely not, not detrimental to the surrounding community. As far as the variance for the school, the, it's, we are, we have a 200-foot variance that we're requesting. Let's see, I have notes on that one. So all alcohol production would take place in the rear, back here, as I mentioned. These doors, this door is unlocked, this is an egress door, emergency, so it's locked from the outside, but unlocked from the inside. This door is internal door, and this door here, this external door, those will be locked unless they're being used by an employee. So generally, myself or one of my partners, or if we've hired an assistant brewer. So no one would really be able to enter into those doors to get into the, where we're producing the alcohol. As far as the tavern itself, we do have coffee, we will be making sodas, so- So, what we're, what we're saying is that anyone under the age of 18, after 12:00 PM, so after noon, whether we're open during that period or not, starting at noon, no one's allowed in under the age of 18 unless accompanied by a responsible adult. And then no one under the age of 21 will be allowed to drink alcohol of any type at any time. And all of us, all three of us are currently BACIT certified, which is the state of Illinois standard for alcohol servers. And it speaks to things like underage drinking and overconsumption and how to handle those things. So, we're, and we, we all have our, I don't know if you guys need to see, we actually all have our BACIT cards. Did I lose yours, Eric? Did you give me yours? I do have Heidi's somewhere. I just don't know where it went. So, I mean, just, so yeah, we are all certified for this. So, that's, I feel that there's, there's actually very little risk of, to the schoolchildren. We also aren't planning on serving alcohol generally before about 3:30 or 4:00 PM. We haven't locked down the times yet, but that's going to be around the time in the afternoon when the taps become unlocked, with the exception of Fridays during the summer. We'd like to capture the, the lunch crowd if we could. So, that'd be probably noon. So, the, the hours at alcohol service don't really coincide very much with the school hours. And then the, the final point that I have on that is that there actually is a, there actually have been variances granted for establishments that are much closer to the school in the past, within the Village. They're currently, currently operating establishments. So, it's, there is a precedent that's been set here. And then in regards to the parking, so Joe actually explains this much, much better than I can because apparently Joe has all the answers, right?
I knew that would come back.
Yes.
For a long time.
Multiple times, Joe. That's coming up a lot. So, the previous uses for this location required only four spaces. They were in and out retail. I believe there was a, there was furniture store. There was an auto parts store there previously.
And a florist shop.
And a florist, yes, yes. Which is why we have a 30 amp outlet in the basement where the cooler was. For an establishment such as ours, people are expected to linger a little bit. So, it requires, the calculation is one space per every three seats. Our current seating capacity for tables, that is, I believe you guys have this one, but that is this You'll have to excuse my hand-sketched tables. We hadn't really gotten, the architects hadn't really gotten to putting them in yet. Based on this, this sketch, we are showing 38 seats, which then requires 13 total spaces. Since there are four grandfathered, that's a variance of nine, which we had calculated out based on the Village Codes to be approximately a $2,000 fee, which we're fine with. So, and the, the parking that we would be using then would be actually related to, many of the businesses right along the street there actually closed early, in my mind, early. Between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, there's veterinarian and dentists, and there's a, a game shop that I believe stays open a little bit later. But it, many of the businesses right, right near us would, would be closed during the times that we're open and need parking. So, wouldn't significantly impact. And I believe that's all I have. So, go easy on me. It's been a long day.
All right. Well, we'll go easy for the next few minutes because we're going to hear from, and those all.
Okay.
We'll have staff offer their comments.
I'll deliberately make mistakes from this point forward. So, what you have before you is, first off, a special use permit for a tavern. So, when the applicant first approached staff, it was, this use was definitely a head-scratcher to us. So, it's a craft brew tavern, small scale. So, in the B2, and I, I don't think a lot of my Commissioners were here, and actually I wasn't even here when this occurred, but we amended our code to allow in the B2, microbreweries and brew pubs. And microbreweries implied a certain component of manufacture that's sent off-site, and brew pubs had a food component. So, when the applicant approached us, we said, where do you best fit? And actually, because it is serving of alcohol without food, they are classified as a tavern. So, historically, our taverns in town have liquor licenses that allow beer, wine, liquor. This, in this case, would have a newly crafted liquor license specific that he could serve only beer. And I think John can probably discuss, after I'm done, the, the recent addition of a liquor license because at this point, the liquor licensing didn't even support the use as it was proposed. So, one of the first things the applicant did was said, can I even exist in your town? Is there even such a license that is obtainable? And so that required a certain amount of, of staff research and, and consultation on how best to address that. So, first and foremost, this is a tavern. So, we haven't had many new taverns in the downtown. They've always been restaurants. There was a special event center right at 9 and 11 West Quincy, which is one of the vacant buildings over here, that a few years ago did get a variance, did get a special use for the tavern, although they, they also said they're not a real tavern because they would only hold events and only serve alcohol during the events. They wouldn't be open all the time. It was only during events. And then they were also within proximity of a nearby school within 500 feet, so they obtained a variance for that. Similar, but not really, this is a tavern that is within 800 feet of J.T. Manning School. So, it is within the required 1,000-foot setback of a distance of separation that's required in the zoning code. There's actually a much lesser distance for the liquor code. The zoning code established 1,000. The one thing I do, do want to point out is that the applicant did discuss people approaching the building and not being able to either be served or, or access into certain areas. But I think it's important to consider the, the 1,000 square foot is also in consideration of someone having a drink and then making their way towards the school, which was not discussed. But that is one of the other considerations. Now, if you actually measure this by footsteps and where you can walk on the street, it is just over 1,000. But the way the standard has this measured is we go building to building, don't care what's in between these two things. So, it is 800, 800 feet. And then finally, the, the parking variance, we saw something very similar to this, just with the credit union with that was approved next door a few months ago. So, basically, we give a credit for when the building was built and what the intended use for the building was. So, in this case, it's always been a general retail of some sort, which required four spaces. There are not four spaces on the property, so we grandfather that in. We only look at what the, the new intensity of the changed use requires. And so that is a variance of nine spaces. In this case, there is on-street parking immediately adjacent in front of the building. This is on the corner of Irving, so there are spaces next to the building. And then the village-owned lot is on the north side of Irving, right next to Toons Funeral Home, that is also village-owned. Those all are restricted to four hours. So, patrons could come and they could park there. They couldn't park there for a, a long length of time. And then as of any business in the downtown, we would require that the applicant get permits for employees. So, basically more than four hours of parking to, we have spaces reserved in the metro lots. So, basically you'd be required to park and walk a block if you were going to be parking for more than four hours.
I mean, I can, I can.
Well, we do have concerns that you will be closing at nighttime. I don't know if you'll have a till. You need to make safety considerations for yourself or leave it locked up and, and just, you know, leave in pairs type thing if that, if that's truly the way it's going to operate. The last thing I want to mention is that if you look at our comprehensive plan, there's one, one little paragraph in there that talks about our downtown, and one of the issues is overdevelopment. And it actually shows this property. This property has a building in the front. It has a, what was a former single-family home that I think has been converted into multiple units. And then it has a two-car garage that serves that home. There is zero landscaping. There is zero outdoor space. There is zero parking. It is a fully developed lot. What the applicant has not addressed, and I encourage you to ask questions if you feel it's relevant, is this is a building that directly abuts a residence. Now, it's not a residential district. The, the, the house and the, the part, the garage actually do separate it a bit from the residential district that's adjacent. But there are residences that will be directly affected by the decisions tonight or what the Village Board ultimately determines. So, I just want to point that out as a, maybe a discussion point. As always, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments, John?
Just a couple of quick comments. The state liquor code requires a 100-foot distance separation between a liquor establishment and a school or church or nursing home. So, this 1,000-foot distance separation is unique to Westmont. It's a zoning ordinance requirement far in excess of what the state requires for, for licensed establishments. The liquor license itself for a brew tavern is something that was recently created by the Village Board to accommodate this request. I don't think the Village Board historically has been keen on taverns, but there's a growing, I think, sense of embracing brew pubs, particularly in the downtown with, and it, an attempt to attract denser residential development in the downtown seemed like there was good synergy between brew pubs and increased residential density. The restrictions in the, this classification of license are that only beer brewed on the premises can be sold and consumed on the premises. There's also some, a takeout component if they want to sell growlers or whatever. So, if this business model fails and they said, oh, we just want to become a tavern and sell PBRs, they could not do that. They can only sell beer licensed on, on the premises. And then my, my aside, my personal commentary is, if anyone's interested, Outside Magazine just had an article on, actually a series of articles, what makes great small towns unique. And they pointed to a variety of factors in attracting brew pubs was highlighted for many towns as means to their success. And some are actually offering economic incentives to bring in good brew pubs because they attract, as you pointed out, young people, money, tech people, et cetera. And I think some of the Village Board had some awareness of that when they created this liquor license.
Great. Thank you, John. All righty. I will open up the public hearing on this. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or against this particular subject? I see we have a couple of people here. Yes, ma'am. Please come on up. Just sign in. Give us your name.
Sign in, sign this?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Apps. I'm one of the residents that reside directly adjacent to the building that is applying for the application right now. And I, I welcome you into the community. So, I'm not anti-brewery. I personally don't drink beer. My daughter does, who resides with me. But my questions are, with you brewing on the, the property, we're only maybe 10 feet. I don't know the exact distance between that building and my residence. And my concern is with some of the brewing going on, I know that it's released, but there has to be some type of smell or aroma or some type of yeasty smell, I would imagine. I haven't researched this, but I'm just in question. My daughter is a culinary chef, and I know that she's worked with this type of thing. And she says, yes, ma, it's a very strong yeasty smell. There is an odor. And I guess my questions or concern as a resident is, not that I'm anti-this business, but with me being so close to the adjacent building, how is it going to impact me and my daughter and my family that's residing I'm not quite sure what the hours of your operation will be.
Well, so I can actually read some of your.
Yeah, come on up to the mic. And do you have any other questions? We'll just have, let them, address them all at once.
It was just basically the hours of the operation.
And then the brewing process and whether it creates any types of odors and things like that. Gotcha. Perfect.
And I'm just a little concerned only because I get up at 5:30 in the morning. And as it is, I get enough disruptions with the community down there. Like 4 o'clock this morning, I had, you know, them dropping off all the porta-potties across my house, which was not delightful to be woke up at 4 o'clock in the morning, but it happens. And that's part of living downtown in the residence. I love where I live. I try and keep up the property. I've tried to make it as green as possible. So, I try and do as much landscaping as possible.
Are those all of your garden, those plants?
Are those tomato plants yours?
Those are all mine.
I always, I, I stop and look at those all the time.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
I haven't been up to par this year. I've been a little under the weather, and I've been pulling two jobs. So, I, I've gotten a little delayed. Normally, it looks much nicer. But I will be bringing it up to par a little bit better. But yes, those are all my plants. Those are all my babies. So, I do enjoy living down there. I enjoy the businesses down there. But this was just one of my concerns.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. We'll let them do a little answering for us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We definitely appreciate the, these concerns, these questions. So, let me address the noise issue first. First off, it's a, this building is a brick building. The entirety of it is mason-made. So, the walls are, I believe the walls are six inches thick, the outers, approximately something like that. So, brewing itself doesn't generate a massive amount of noise. We're not, we're not grinding things. We're not hammering on things unless something's broken and we have to, like, fix it, which is, I'm not going to say it's rare, but it's, it's uncommon. The, the most noise that you'll get will be from exhaust pan, exhaust fans and pumps. And the pumps, we're, we're talking, they're tiny little pumps. So, most of the noise from the brewing, you probably won't hear outside of the building. In addition to that, the, the brewing schedule that we have is, we're planning on opening at, probably open the doors about 7:00 in the morning for coffee, and then close them at around 10:00. I have to see what the, where the rush hour taper-off is. But once the doors are closed, that's when I'll, we move into the back and start brewing. And then that takes, depending on what we've got scheduled for the day, it can take between three and six hours. And that's it. Once it's done, it's done, and it's exhausting, and I'm not going to push it any farther than I have to on any given day. So, in most cases, we will be completely done in the back area, done brewing and making large amounts of noise well before most people get home from work. So, it would, it would kind of fall within the standard working day hours for that. In regards to noise from the actual operation of the taproom itself, again, everything is from, it's from this point forward, and people are really only allowed here. So, the only times you would have people out, this is an egress hallway, the only times you would actually have people out this back door is if there was a fire, which we hope never happens. All the rest of these doors, this, these, these two are employee-only. This is the only entrance here. So, yes, some people will be coming up from Irving because they'll be parking along Irving and the municipal lot. But all entry and exits will be here. And I do have quite a bit of background with working in bars in Chicago when I was younger, about four or five years' worth. And generally speaking, people are allowed when they come out the front door, but then they quiet down as they kind of move away. You come out and you're laughing with your friends, and then you, as you, as everyone disperses, it quiets down. So, usually, by the time that people get, get, would get down near the residence, it shouldn't be an issue at all. And then, you know, as needed, we'll obviously post signs and say, please respect our neighbors. They're, they're putting up with us, please. You know, don't, don't make a lot of noise. So, in regards to smells, yes, as I mentioned, there is a, there is a smell. It's, depending on who you are and how much you like it, it's either wonderful or horrible. During the initial boiling, there is a, it's a, almost like a bready smell. We're boiling gra- We're boiling grains. Every time there's a hop addition, you do get a sharp, it's a sharp greenish smell, I guess. It's hard to explain, but it's, those smells dissipate very quickly. Prior to moving to this area, I actually lived about four blocks from the Revolution production facility in Chicago, which is, I mean, they're, we're doing, these are three barrel fermenters. They have, you know, 100,000 barrel fermenters. And I could always tell when they were doing their, when they were doing their additions, but the smell dissipated within 20 minutes from there. So is it going to be an issue? It could be if you're standing there when it's actually happening and you just really don't like it. We are planning on doing all the venting straight up in the air, so it'll come out this window here and actually be angled up. So it'll, it would actually vent kind of over the roof of there. This is a flat top roof on this, so it would angle up over the, up towards the roof, so into the, into the general atmosphere and not... I had actually already looked at that. We're definitely not planning on venting anything directly at the facing of their property, so.
And is that, that's during the sort of traditional business day that you mentioned before?
Right. That would be just during the brewing time. As far as the yeasty smells during fermentation, you get it, you'll get it inside, but that stuff doesn't, it wouldn't venture to the outside. That wouldn't flow through the outside in any way. That's not...
That's what's happening.
So that's not something that, it just, it's fairly minor, so.
And do you brew seven days a week?
Oh, no. No, no. Each semi-fill of fermenter, it has to sit. So we'll brew for, you know, two or three hours, whatever, and then we'll fill a fermenter in that, so this fermenter will sit for at least a week, depending on what's in there. At least a week, up to, barley wines can go like eight weeks. So that's full until it's done. So at the beginning, yeah, we'll probably brew six times, and then maybe we'll wait a week, and I'll do other things related to brewing but not specifically brewing, until those are empty. And then, then the cycle starts up again, so. And I have a, I do have a map laid out that has varying times on each of these. So some will be lagers, those take longer. For example, IPAs are very, very quick, so.
But brewing could take place on a staggered basis, up to seven days a week, but never all seven days of the week.
Right.
And the noise and smell associated with that is typically during the business sort of hours of the day?
Yes, so the standard working day. And that's actually, that's fairly uniform across all the breweries. Brewers work during the day, and then the bar staff works in the evenings. So for me, for us, it happens to be that we're all of the above, because there's, you know, just us at the moment.
Okay. Did that answer your questions, ma'am?
To some degree, I guess. I'm still a little concerned about how long the smell will be dissipating in that area.
Generally speaking, it dissipates very quickly. It lingers for less than half an hour. Like I said, when I was, when I lived near Evolution, I could tell you exactly what they were brewing, but I had to catch it at that time because the smell was gone within 20 minutes, so. There were days when I stood there and said, "Oh, they're doing Antihero today. That's wonderful." So.
Great. Any other questions, ma'am?
Is there any other way to filter it, where maybe it's coming?
Unfortunately, no. In order to filter the smells out, the filters would have to be, I don't even know the microns on it, they would have to be extremely fine filters, so. It, I don't, I'm not diminishing your concerns related to this, it just, it's kind of, for a brewery, it's just kind of one of our, it's one of the things that happens.
Right, and I appreciate that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to...
And I mean, my hope is that you'll come to love the smell.
My daughter will love it. I'm not...
Yeah, she's already stopped by.
... and all of that, I mean, that's not my capacity. But I think just like, I'm very turned off by the smell of coffee, I'm a coffee drinker.
Well, the coffee roasting...
That, no, that doesn't bother me because that I'm not worried about in the shop. My main concern because we are so close.
Right.
I mean, there's literally like 10...
It's 7, actually, 7.7.
Okay.
They had to measure it because we had to put a, we'll have to pour concrete there. Flatten that, all that broken area back there has to be flattened out for a wheelchair. So we'll move the stand pipe over in the corner.
Okay. Anyone else, sir? Do you have something you'd like to add?
I'm just here to support.
Oh, okay, okay. I see another young gentleman in the back there.
I'm just like watching...
He should be, he should be...
Just out for an evening, and you thought you'd come by for some entertainment?
That was my face he saw first this evening.
Nice.
I was just late in the day, but we...
Okay.
I always head over, you know, for the while, gas and, and, well, actually, I'm living in, Dallas Grove is my house, but I'm living in Kessel for 40 years because we have business in city builders in North of Kessel. Now we have arco plumbing, so I'm very familiar with it. I know all the establishments and like taverns and that. And when this gentleman came to me, I was a little bit concerned about tavern and that, but he explained to me that would be like more like even social meetings, you know, for people, that it would be even coffee there. So I even investigated, I was talking to the sisters a lot about that, and I was asking neighbors, businesses, even the residents, everyone was for that, they was going to be okay, so I told them, okay, now, you know. So I think that that might be...
Thank you. All right, let's hear from some of our commissioners, and I'll begin with Commissioner Kermit, please.
Good evening. I look at your business plan and everything, and your timeline is pretty optimistic there. I guess if I have concerns, it's this letter from the fire department listing a number of different things, starting, I would say, with sprinklers, sprinkling the building is, are you going to, have you done that, or are you going to do that before you start brewing, or what's the...
It is surprisingly hard to get a sprinkler vendor to come out unless you're going to guarantee them the work. So we're trying as hard as we can to get one to come out in the next couple of weeks. But the plan is that, yes, the building will eventually be sprinkled. We need to get a quote first, and we need to speak with the fire marshal and with Mr. Kaufman again regarding kind of options. I have spoken, as soon as Joe shared that memo with me, I actually set a meeting with Larry Kaufman, and we sat down and we went over them point by point. We have had a, the gentleman that put in the fire detection, oh, I don't have the quote with me, system that's in there approximately five years ago, maybe? He said he thinks it was about five years ago. He came in to take a look, give us a quote on adding detection. He also has to remove everything before we do the, any construction, so it doesn't get damaged. So he came in and gave us a quote on that, which we've, I think we're pretty close to accepting from him. And that's for the detection portion. And then as far as sprinklers go, like I said, we're just, we're fully aware that there's a sprinkler issue. We just can't find a vendor to come in and, you know, on our schedule.
But your plan is to open without...
Our plan is to do, our plan is to do exactly what's required of us. So if, and that's why I say we're, we'll be meeting with the fire marshal in regards to this as well. If he says we absolutely have to have the sprinklers before we can ever open our doors, then those sprinklers will be in there. If he says we have to have them within a year, then they'll be in in six months. So it's more a matter of, we need to set our timeline based on our available funding as well as the community needs. I'm certainly not against sprinkling, for the record. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's a, it's absolutely something that's needed, especially in a space that's going to house multiple people at a time. I think our occupancy is calculated about 54. So yes, there's absolutely, you know, potential for disaster if something should happen, and there's no sprinklers. So we just, we, we're proceeding, we're looking at our options, and we're proceeding in the best possible fashion, is what we're, based on the recommendations of the village officials.
Is it too early, or could you, could you go through these? Did you discuss each of these seven items with...
I did.
With Chief Kaufman and...
Yes.
Tell us what...
We did, and do I...
If I can interrupt for one moment. That was Larry Kaufman's initial comments. There was an email in your packet where he acknowledges that he's met with the applicant, and the applicant, actually, the plans that you're seeing and are included here were complete revisions from his initial packet because Larry Kaufman said you need to get an architect involved. I think you even changed around the bathrooms. You've added that corridor, you've added the back door. It's, so it's provided to show that he has been working with Larry Kaufman and has been responding to it. In that email that Larry Kaufman provided, I wouldn't say it's an approval, it's an acknowledgement that says the applicant has acknowledged that they're going to have to sprinkler, they're going to have to accommodate certain building codes, and he's working towards that.
Correct.
Because what we, what we never want with these special use approvals is to have an applicant that said, "I didn't realize I was going to have to sprinkle, I didn't realize there wasn't a cost attributed to this. I need to now ask that I don't do something." So in this case, the applicant has acknowledged that whatever the fire department is requiring will be installed.
And we've been aware of the sprinkling issue.
You used the word eventually earlier. I would say that with a target date, you know, it...
Right, and that's, and that's where we're proceeding, we're proceeding in the best possible fashion. So we don't know if a time-to-comply variance will be granted by the fire marshal. We just don't know, and we won't know that until we have a quote. The quote may come back, you know, $20,000, God, I wish. And in that case, then, you know, the sprinklers go in immediately. Quote comes back at $50,000, then we need to talk about, you know, that it changes, it changes their overall timeline as well. So it's just, there, with the sprinklers especially at this moment, there's just a number of variables that haven't been solved, but we are aware of them. We've been aware of the sprinkler issue from, probably from the first time I ever spoke to Milan, when we looked at the building. He said, "This building needs sprinklers, and there's no connection." So we've been aware of that for quite a while. It's just, as, you know, it's gotten pushed aside previously because, in favor of other things, such as the zoning and things, but, and now we're attempting to find a vendor who will actually come out. And I don't know if you've ever dealt with, like, specialty vendors like this, they know that they're specialty vendors, so they're not, they're not super flexible sometimes. So that's the difficulty we're running into at the moment. We will find one. We will actually, we'll find one prior to actually our permit being issued. It's just a matter of getting one that can come out on our schedule.
And his concern on having two separate points of egress with...
Yes, that was, we actually did an emergency redraw on this. Previously, these bathrooms were here against the wall, and we had much larger space here and then in the center. So what we've done is, this is obviously one point of egress. We've moved the bathrooms back three feet, created a corridor down to the back.
Okay.
Back door. We'll be pouring concrete down here to flatten this out, it's a broken area. There's what I assume is wild vegetation. I hope that's not your plants. There's rhubarb and just weeds back there. There is a stand pipe here that runs to their, over to the residence for their gutters. That will be moved to the corner, back corner. So then this will all be flat, so the wheelchair can get out through this area should something happen. And as far as this area goes, we'll have a door here so we can access it as well. Realistically, in an operation such as this, the largest danger of any kind of fire would be back here. I won't be using open flame, but if for some reason somebody dryfires one of my heating elements, it could catch fire. Normally, they just burn out, but they could catch fire. So that's actually going to be the area of the largest risk of fire. There's no open flame up here at all. So if there, if something catches fire, that means somebody's up there doing something stupid, and they shouldn't be doing that. And, you know, hopefully, we'll be all over that and stop it before anything would happen, so.
So is it standard in brew pubs and where they're, places where they're brewing, whether, regardless of the type of heat they're using, that they have fire extinguishers all over?
We actually have, we currently have four in the space that I'll be replacing, and then I'll be adding, I mean, there'll be, there will be definitely one in the serving area, there will be one out, definitely one out in the tavern area and two in the brewing area. And we'll likely just, there's like a little alcove there. We'll likely just hang one there just because it's a convenient spot.
People, pedestrians on Irving on the north side of the building, looking in that window at the northeast corner of the building, what will they see? Would that be the fermentation vats or what?
Yeah, fermentation vessels.
See people working in there?
Yeah, they'll see me working, depending on my mood, if I pull the shade or not. We're thinking about putting a shade in there, so. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be people working, the vats bubbling away. This, what's labeled as BT1 right here, that's actually, so these, the fermentation vessels are, we're using plastics at the moment. Those will be upgraded to steel, and it's fully accepted within the industry that the plastics are where you can start. But this, this one here is actually a stainless steel, so it's going right in the window. Nice little showpiece. So what people would expect to see as they go by a brewery.
Okay, well, that's all I have. Obviously, I'm very concerned about the...
Understood.
... fire situation.
Commissioner Van Buren. I too am concerned about the fire, but I am going to assume that all the regulations fire-wise, engineering-wise will be met. So let's go back to what the three issues here are. The special use ferment, I have no problem with that. Joe has pretty well explained how we arrived at the category form. The zoning variance request, because of the 1,000 feet, again, we've, we see we have several precedents there, and it's even more than 1,000 if we were to step it out. So I don't have any problem with that. And as far as parking is concerned, any business downtown, if we held the feet to the fire and parking, we wouldn't have a business down there. So I think that's resolved in my mind. I would also like to say that this, assuming you can go forward with it, and I hope you will be able to, will be a nice fit with our coming residential developments downtown. It should be complimentary to both of you, and so I hope that you can resolve the issues with the fire department and so on, and with the, whatever building requirements so that you can successfully open.
And we are working directly with Larry, and I believe his name is Jim, is the inspector that actually performs the inspections downtown. We're working very closely with them in regards to these things. Obviously, the egress issue is solved, and this is really, we're concerned with getting the building started at this point, but in addition to that, it'll be, you know, the appropriate number of fire extinguishers, you know, what's required for sprinkling, exactly what's required for sprinkling, and timeline on that, and then the amount of detection. And again, we've, we do have a vendor who's come in for the detection portion, and he's already, he's already gone through and mapped it all out, and he's, he's given us a quote on what's appropriate for the space and the needs, so.
So, thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Most of my questions have been answered. I find it, due to the history of Westmont and its relationships pro and con with taverns and bars and the amount, to know that, or to be told that a license has been created for this instance is, wow. I supported most of my other questions, 1,000-foot, it's not a high school, and there is precedence, you know, and so I support it. Wish you luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I have a few questions, I think, I may have missed this, but what I understand is that there's no food component. So what does that limit you to in the future with this type of liquor license?
There's no, so the liquor license has no food requirement, meaning that if for some reason we decided to put it in a kitchen, we'd be okay doing that.
Okay, that was basically just...
Right. What we are planning on doing, we don't want, we're not chefs. That's the base of it, and we don't really want to deal with a kitchen build-out. So the plan is, and we've been speaking with some of the local restaurants, is we're going to, I say partner up, but there's really no, it's not a, we'll take somebody's point-of-sale system and set it on our bar. So if you're, if you're in there and you're hungry, then obviously you're certainly welcome to order delivery, or, hey, look, we've got a local restaurant right here, you order from them directly, and you pay them, they'll bring it down. So it becomes a, almost like an off-site, an off-site location for them, like a patio, I guess, would be the closest description, so. And currently, we're leaning towards... And currently, we're leaning towards neat kitchen, I think, it's probably going to be one of the best, better options, but we haven't really finalized anything with him. Like I said, there's, we've got a lot of things in the air, so there's a number of little ideas that are kind of getting shuffled out of the way for the moment.
Well, and you'll probably, I mean, you'll develop that over time. I just wanted to make sure that the possibility was there.
Right.
I mean, I frequent Potbelly, and they just have, you know, free peanuts, which is a nice, nice complement to beer, salted beer.
Well, we're also going to be working with a cheese, a cheesemonger who makes, he makes cheese flights out of your beer. So then he'll, he'll make wheels of cheese and carve them up into flights, and then we can sell those and pair them and things like that as well. So there will be snacks in-house, not peanuts.
Yeah, okay. I think the parking variance is a perfect example of a variance, as opposed to my earlier comment about the previous project. I think this is, this site has nowhere else to go if it's to be used at all for anything other than, I think Joe said, four spaces that his grandfather had. So I think that that variance is required and justified, and given the proximity to other on-street parking and the off-street parking, I'm not worried about that. The list, I'm also concerned about the fire department's seven-point list, just because there's a lot of money in there.
The only thing on that list that we haven't definitively settled with them is the sprinklers. The special paint for the flooring?
Yeah, that's expensive paint.
That's actually on my, that's on, the architects have that on their, when they give us the final list to give to the contractor, that's on there. The fire doors are on there. Like, all of the other things are on there already. Fire detection, again, we've, we've gone with the original vendor who put in that system to begin with, and he's, he's given us a quote on that. It's really, again, the only thing that hasn't been settled is the sprinkling, and we're working as hard as hard as we can on getting somebody.
Yeah, well, it's kind of a Westmont-specific requirement, from what I understand. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of areas where you wouldn't need to have sprinklers, so it's just something to make sure your contractors, all of these, I would encourage you should always be bouncing this off your contractor.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's a lot of money.
Well, right now, we're bouncing them off the architects, who have also been, they've been calling Joe, and they've been calling, apparently, building commissioner and Larry to clarify points as needed.
Yeah, I think, I think overall, I mean, I've been here for, I've lived in Westmont for seven years, I've been waiting for your place to open up for seven years on Cass.
Not that much longer.
I mean, you got beer, you got coffee in the morning, both of those things, for me, are desperately lacking in our downtown. So I really look forward to your opening and for frequenting your establishment, and I think it's got a lot of good synergy with other uses. I mean, I can see the game, the game night people, there's a lot of groups that spend late nights at that game shop, maybe they want to do a special game night in your place.
Well, we've actually already talked to Mike and Mr. Waynes about doing something in conjunction with his shop.
Yeah, there's a lot of possibility.
And that's also related, then, to the collectibles and the games. I did stop in and mention it to the gentleman at Hot Sauce Games, and he was in the middle of a game night, so I don't think he quite.
Yeah, but I think you have the backing of a lot of, a lot of people in Westmont, so I wish you all the best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartel?
Have you started any internal construction, or you're just in the planning phase? Because I look through the windows, and you've got some things in there, and...
Well, we're using it for storage at the moment.
Okay.
So as we're, we're also, I like to do a lot of things at the same time, so in conjunction, so we're, you know, we've been sourcing things like tables and chairs, and so that, those things are being stored in there. I do go there occasionally, take my laptop instead of the table and work. But it's not, there's, it's certainly not being, we're not utilizing it for business, and we're, we don't have the permit, so we can't, we can't start construction at this point, so.
Do you own the building?
Milan owns the building.
Oh, you own the building, okay, all right. I'm supportive, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Wish you luck.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
What's going on in the basement?
Nothing. Storage, it'll be dry storage only.
Okay. Is there any equipment or any process that is running when the building's unoccupied?
No equipment that's running. There is, the fermentation process is running, but it just kind of runs, it's not mechanic, it's all organic. So the yeast is doing its yeasty thing. That's, that's just, it's just kind of the way brewing works. So you, you put the yeast, you make up the soup, and then you put the yeast in, and then you walk away from it for X number of days, and it just kind of happily bubbles away and turns itself into alcohol. Very low levels of alcohol, it's...
Okay. Are there any electrical upgrades to the building?
Any electrical what?
Electrical upgrades in the building.
Um, no. Maybe. We're not sure yet. So we have a 200-amp meter. The architects are recommending that we talk to ComEd about upgrading the meter to 400 amp. However, they've also said that it's, it's not critical. So we'll be moving some of the outlets around, obviously, to get them where we need them, but we can, we can run on 200 amps. It's tight, it's just, so they've recommended that we at least speak to them about it, but it's not a, it's not a requirement by any means. So depending on what ComEd says in regards to price, we may, just because I'd like to have a little more leeway with electricity. I mean, you know, that could be the difference between one TV and two TVs, if we decide to put two in, or something like that, so.
Okay. So let's go back to the list, I want to make sure I'm clear.
Absolutely.
You're willing to do everything on the list, number one, right? The only issue that you have now that you have unresolved with the fire chief is one item on here, that's sprinklers.
Correct.
I didn't hear when, I know I heard variables and cost, but I didn't hear anything associated with a deadline that you have to have them in.
Okay, so in speaking with Mr. Kaufman, in regards to this, he said that there is the possibility for what's called a time-to-comply variance, and it's up to three years. It's at the sole discretion of the fire marshal, and it's based on, there's a number of factors that he uses to base his decision on. And at the end of the day, we can check all the boxes for him, and he can still say no. So the deadline will either be before opening day, or some period within this three-year period, depending on what the fire marshal decides is appropriate. And like I said, if we get a, if we get a three-year variance, it'll be in before three years. Because it's really, you really don't want to be super established and have a whole bunch of things in there, and then put in sprinklers because they have to come in and test them. So then you have to tarp everything up and clean it all up, clean it up after, like, after the fact, so.
Interesting.
What's that?
It's a long time.
It is, it is. And I, again, I'm fully in support of sprinkling. I think it's a, I think it's an absolutely, absolutely a needed item, but the...
It just can't be that expensive for that size building.
Uh, well, you'd be surprised. The last number I got from the veterinary put it in, they did theirs, and it was $40,000. And they had to auger under the street to do it.
That's the expensive thing, right? The water's on the other side of the street, so you need to bring it over.
Yes, although Larry said he believes that there's a water main on Irving that we can tap into. So it may not, it may be, instead of augering, we have to bore, you know, so a smaller drill. Smaller drill for somebody that's still making $300 an hour, I guess. So it's just, it is, you know, the piping, again, it's a specialty item. These pendants themselves, there's a certain number of pendants, there's a calculation for how many, where they have to be. Each one of these pendants costs probably close to $1,000 to install. I mean, it's just, it's just, because it's a specialty vendor, they've kind of, they've got you, and they know they've got you. And so there's, there's, you know, if I, if you come in and quote it to me at this price, and say, "Well, I don't like your price, I'm going to go to the next guy," you go out to your truck, and you call the next guy and say, "Hey, guess what?" And then when I call that guy, he gives me the same price. That's, I've had other, I've had other brewers in the area that I've talked to about it, and they said that's exactly what happened to them, so.
Okay. I support Commissioner Van Buren's assessment of the requests that are in front of us, but this is a showstopper issue for me personally, because it's a safety issue. You've heard my testimony on other cases tonight. It's just one of those things, I like the business model, I like everything that you're doing, I like, you know, the location, I want to go there, but I don't want to put lives at risk.
Right. Understood. And part of the, part of the requirements, even before we go and ask for any kind of, even before we speak to the fire marshal, is it requires extra detection initially. So even in order to get any, any kind of variance, we have to automatically put in extra detection, which this vendor that we spoke with has, he's already accounted for that. So instead of having, I think this space currently has four upstairs, I believe, we're actually going to have, I believe, eight detectors. So, and the idea behind that is that if something does happen, we'll catch it a lot quicker. So if somebody's over there and they light something on fire, we'll, we'll know, even if they're in the front corner. We can, you know, hustle them out the door and smack them with a newspaper and say bad.
What was the answer on the structural evaluation for the floor?
The architect, the structural engineers have no issue with it.
And they're willing to certify to that, to the village, that the floor system?
That would be part of the, that'd be part of the stamped plans that we give.
Okay. That's where firefighters die.
Understood. Understood. And, I mean, for us, that's, you know, the largest load will be here in this, obviously, these tanks are, it's 110 gallons at, there's a calculation you do, but it's, when you figure a 15-gallon keg is about 160 pounds, those are 110 gallons, so that's, that's where the main, the main load is. And they, they went and they looked, and they said, "Everything's, everything seems to be fine as far as they're concerned." They're actually more concerned with the air conditioning unit than they are with the structural at this point, so.
The reason for my question about the electrical, you know, is being upgraded, are we using an old service? And actually, your answer was a negative to me on the upgrade, because it sounded to me like, you know, you're near the maximum that the existing service would allow, and if we're going to stress that system that's in that building, I don't know how old it is. And what happens here is, you have what I would define as contributing factors.
Right.
You know, you have the floor system that's a contributing factor, which has been mitigated, but you might have an electrical thing going on that could be a contributing factor. No sprinklers a contributing factor. Then I've got a residence next door that's in very close proximity, and then I've got a basement that is unsprinkled, you know.
Well, the basement will be sprinkled. We can't just...
Would you commit to an earlier timeframe?
Not until I get a quote. I can't commit to any kind of timeframe until I actually have a quote in front of me for a cost of it. I can't, you, I could, I could stand here in front of you right now and say, "Oh, we'll have a sprinkler in, you know, in 60 days," and then we're going to get a quote for $90,000, and that just, it's just not tenable. And at that point, we walk away from the project, and it stops. So it's just, would I commit to an earlier date? Again, I, we'll be meeting with the fire marshal and following, to the letter, their recommendations. So, and that's, you know, until we get that quote, we can't, we can't commit to any, any kind of definitive date on it. And again, that quote does feed into any, any recommendations from the fire marshal. So if he looks at that quote and it's $90,000, he's more inclined to give you at least a small amount of time to comply. If he looks at that quote and it's considerably less than what he feels you should be able to handle, then he won't, he doesn't grant that, and he tells us to figure it out. So we've already, I've had that discussion with Larry twice, a couple times now, as to what that, what's, what that all entails, so.
Question for staff, have you talked to the fire chief directly about this?
I've talked to Larry Kaufman, who formerly is, I think, the director of the fire...
I did hear it's Joe.
I've talked to Larry Kaufman, the director of the fire prevention bureau, I haven't talked to Chief Weiss. And so what we did is, when, when the applicant did revise the drawings, we did submit the new drawings. And there is an email from Larry that indicates he's working towards a solution, but I haven't talked to the chief directly. And Larry is pleased that he's working with them to move forward. And I think in this venue, one of our highest importances is that the applicant is fully aware that the sprinklers will be required. And my understanding is that the level of construction that he needs to do in there, they will be required, it's just it's under the fire department's discretion if they decide to not require it on day one. And we do have several shopping centers that have agreements with it. Basically, that, those are agreements that don't come through community development, they're dealt with exclusively through the fire department. I can't tell you how they make their decisions on those.
I have no more questions.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple of points I'd like to bring up. The first one is, Joe, are you aware of how many other liquor licenses we have within this 1,000-foot ring?
Unfortunately, I do not have that.
Okay. I can only see that there has to be at least a couple, though, because...
Well, there are liquor licenses, but I think there are many establishments that were put in well before, because formerly, I think the only two taverns in downtown, and it's a tavern requirement, not just a liquor license requirement.
Oh, so you could be a restaurant.
So you can be a restaurant. The only two taverns we have are Potbelly and Uptown. I think the only one in proximity is Potbelly, and I think that's down the street, a little bit further, it might be outside. But there are many restaurants that serve alcohol and liquor and beer that don't have the same 1,000-foot requirement.
I didn't realize that. Thank you for clarifying it. And then the other point that I'd like to bring up is that, you know, we're looking at these three parts to this approval, A, B, and C, and if we allow this to go ahead, the fire marshal is going to have the final say, and no permits will be issued unless that's approved and meets their recommendation, whatever that recommendation may be, whether it's installed before day one, whether it's between zero and three years, however they decide to do it, final permits are not going to be issued until all of that is tied together and brought together. Am I correct?
Correct.
We're not here to be engineering.
Right.
And it's still subject to the granting of a liquor license. The village board approved the liquor license classification, but I think the application process is still ongoing, and that will come before the village board to increase the number of available licenses, and then it's up to the mayor to grant or deny that. And if he does grant it, he can impose reasonable conditions on that liquor license, which could include things like sprinkling, et cetera.
Correct. Okay, I have no further comments. I am also in support of this. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I just want to say, just to echo, just to echo Commissioner Pill, that I think the fire issue is a real concern, given that it's the structure that it is, but you could build this building, it's a very small building, you could build this building without sprinklers in other municipalities and be perfectly by the book. Westmont is different, and we have reasons for that. And I just want to say that I do want to defer that to the engineering. I think that that, that our purview is to let them be the experts. And again, I just want to welcome you and wish you luck.
Thank you.
All righty, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning, item 18-013, ATG Trust Number 96-311 regarding the property located at 41 North Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following: A, a special use permit request to operate a craft brewery tavern in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Comments or questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Sherman Pill?
Yes. Item B, I'll entertain a motion for item B, a zoning code variance request to permit a craft brewery tavern within the required 1,000-feet separation from a school, approximately 800 feet of separation shown where code requires 1,000 feet of separation as a special condition for a special use permit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Sharp. Comments, questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Sherman Pill?
Yes. And finally, I'll entertain a motion for item C, a zoning code variance request to reduce the total required number of parking spaces for a craft brewery tavern in the B1 Limited Business District.
So, move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Carmichael. Comment or discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. You have our recommendation, and I would definitely take note about the fire list. I think it was brought up enough times, and Joe will coordinate with you for the next steps, which would be a meeting before the Village Board on a Thursday night in the future. Best of luck. All righty, do we have any other miscellaneous items?
The next meeting is August 8th. Right now, we have only one agenda item.
And I believe we have two commissioners who will be out for that meeting at this point, so it'd be great to make sure we have everybody else here for, make sure we stay towards the forum on that. I'd also just like to mention that we have the Taste of Westmont beginning tomorrow night and continuing on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday through the weekend, and I encourage all of our Westmont residents to come out and support the community with the Taste of Westmont. Anything else?
No, sir.
Fine. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.[1786.82]